I have a question. Do we have a court reporter?
Oh, yeah, we do. Well, let's see. Court reporter, what's her name? She probably came in as an attendee.
Well, Lisa Bradley.
Is the CCR court reporter?
Yes.
That's Lisa Bradley. She's in the waiting room.
I just moved her. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear us. Hi, I'm Lisa Rowley. I am the court reporter. I'm sorry about that. I couldn't unmute for some reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? George? Is he here?
He was.
There he is.
George? Mr. Stein?
I can't hear him. He's muted.
He's muted. He's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I lost the connection.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll call. We, we've got three resolutions this evening. And one application. The first resolution is. Oh, gosh. For some reason, I have the wrong agenda came up. What's the first Claudia? What is the first resolution?
I have it.
It's 44 Armour.
Okay. All right. I believe everybody's got copies of those. In their packet. Has it has everybody had a chance to review them? Review this one specifically? I've got it right here. If, if there are no comments or clarifications, if somebody's like to make, if someone would like to make a motion?
Don't move. This is Stephen Schreiber.
Eve Coulson, I'll second it.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next resolution, which is the next one on the list, Claudia? I'm sorry. I don't have this, but I had the resolutions up.
214 Lambert?
Okay.
Bertrand.
Bertrand.
Bertrand, yeah.
I'm sorry.
224 Bertrand, yes.
14 Bertrand.
214 Bertrand.
214 Bertrand, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, has, have the board members had an opportunity to read it over? And are there any clarifications? Comments, et cetera? And if not, if someone would like to make a motion?
Move to approve the resolution. Nick Palvanes.
Okay. Seconds, anyone?
That's it.
Who is that?
Michael Floyd.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last resolution is, is it Aiken, Aiken Avenue?
21 Aiken.
Yes.
Again, the, everybody's got it. Have you had a chance to review it? And if you've reviewed it and there are no comments? Please, if someone would like to make a motion for approval?
I move to approve. Nick Palvanes again.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it. Eve Coulson?
No, Eve, you can't. You recused yourself.
Oh, you're right.
Yep.
I can second it. No.
Yes.
Who's second? Who's second?
Steve's friend.
Stephen Schreiber.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our hearing tonight is for 20 Nassau Street. It's case number Z 2020-828. It's block 19.02, lot 17 through 20 in the CBCP zone. Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, they are. And the board has jurisdiction to hear the application this evening.
Okay. Before we begin, a couple of things. We, we, I think we all believe this is going to be a lengthy hearing. And we probably won't get through it tonight. Claudia, there a number of people in the audience?
I see 31.
31, okay. So what I think we're going to do this evening is the applicant will present their case. And then with each witness, I would like to give the board members an opportunity to question the witnesses, again, each witness after they present. And I believe the meeting will go till 11 o'clock. We will, we will close the meeting at 11 o'clock. But at 10 o'clock, I'd like to open the, the meeting up to the public to ask questions of the presenters to that point. The next scheduled hearing for this case will be January 6th. But I'd like to give the public an opportunity this evening just to question the, the testimony of the applicants. So I think that's, that's what I'd like to do is start. Any question or comments on that? Okay, all right. So I think Derek, would you like to make an opening statement?
Sure. Thank you.
Eric, Derek, why don't I, since we have other municipal staff here as well tonight, why don't we identify everyone and swear everyone in now? So everyone knows Derek Bridger. We also have Michael Laplace, the town planner. We have Jim Purcell, the town's land use engineer. We have Heather Balgawon. She is the traffic engineer. I think I have everyone. Do you all swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. As Steve mentioned, this is a hearing for a major site plan approval for construct a 178-room hotel. It's been filed by GPNJ owner LLC. Properties located at 20 Nassau Street. Site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Nassau and Chambers, and it contains 27,129 square feet. And it's currently used as a approximately 72,000 square foot mixed-use building containing office space and retail. Site's bound to the northwest by residential properties fronting on Bank Street. Commercial properties to the north and the west and Nassau Center, Christian Center across Chamber Street to the east and Princeton University across Nassau Street to the north. Applicant is proposing to demolish the rear portion of the building consisting of a three-story 44,700 square foot structure and construct a six-story 75,800 square foot building. The existing sixth floor approximately 28,000 square foot front portion of the building fronting on Nassau Street will remain. And the existing retail located on the, located on the first floor of the Nassau Street facade will also remain. The upper stories will be converted to 48 hotel rooms. The reconstructed portion of the building will contain 130 guest rooms. A restaurant and bar are proposed, as is an 80 space valet parking lot located in the basement. There's a wall proposed at the rear section of the building between the adjoining property at 16 Chamber Street and Bank Street. Property is located in the central business zone and the central historic preservation zone. The exist, the hotel use and associated retail and restaurant use are all permitted uses. I'll just speak about some of the variances. The applicant is seeking a four-area variance. That's really why the case is here tonight. Proposed four area of 3.82 exceeds the maximum four area of 1.5. And the existing four area is 2.67. This is a D4, four area ratio variance. There's a few other variances I'd like to discuss. There's a maximum required setback when the property is adjacent to a rear residential zone, maximum 10-foot setback to proposed is zero. The applicant's demolishing the existing three-story portion of the building and rebuilding it, and the section along Bank Street is in the R4 zone requires a 10-foot setback. They're proposing a 10-foot high wall. I mentioned earlier, and the maximum height is six feet. There's a requirement for three loading zones, three spaces. They're only providing one. And loading zone is required for one between 10 and 25,000 feet and one for each additional 75,000 square feet of four area. There are five sign variances requested. And the applicant is also requesting a stack parking variance. Our ordinance does permit stack parking, but it requires a minimum of 100 spaces, and the applicant is proposing 80 spaces. And non-residential are the buildings are limited to five stories and the current building has six stories. There's also a parking variance. And the parking really is triggered on the new construction, which requires a parking requirement of 122 spaces, and they're providing 80 spaces. So the remainder is 42 spaces. A lot of this information is on the website, and I know the applicant is, is working to address some of the variances. So some of the information I spoke about may be different as we go into the application, but this memo is based on when the application was deemed complete. So that's my brief overview of the application. I will note that it's been reviewed by the Site Plan Review Advisory Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Princeton Environmental Commission, and the applicant will respond to the issues and concerns raised in those reports as they go through their presentation. And we will also deal with them at the end of the meet, at the end of the, the hearing. I'm going to hand off to Jim Purcell, the land use engineer. He can speak about some of the engineering issues. And we also have Michael Laplace, the director of planning. And he's going to talk about some of the planning issues. So I'm going to hand off to Jim. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
I just would like to make a statement before we go to Jim. This is Steve Cohen. For those in the audience, I would suggest you make notes on questions you might have. Everybody will get the opportunity to speak to this, this application. It may not be this evening because we'll have a limited time for public discussion. But before any action is taken, all those who want to speak will be allowed to speak. Thank you.
Derek, did Historic Preservation issue a memo?
Yes, sir. I believe it's in the, should be on the, the package.
I didn't, I didn't find one in my package.
No, I didn't either.
Well, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that gets out right away as we speak. Yeah, they entered, and they did send a quite a lengthy thorough memo. So I'll make sure that's distributed to all the board members. Thank you, Michael.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Derek. Thank you, members of the zoning board. I just have a couple of comments. You'll see that the memo is quite comprehensive. We did touch on a number of site plan, engineering and traffic issues in our memo, but I will point out that, as Derek said, I'll reiterate that we expect that the applicant will be addressing each and every one of those this evening. And that we have been working back and forth with them over the last few months and resolving many of the issues. As Derek said, the memo is based on what was submitted when we deemed it complete. And there have been a number of changes that they will present this evening that show that they have gone to some lengths to comply with our concerns. And nothing of real import. The traffic issues are being taken care of with our traffic engineer Heather Balgawon and Georges Jacques Mart, who is the applicant's professional in, in that matter. Again, they, they should be addressing all of the comments that are in there. And I'm here for any questions that you may have after testimony or even now. I will, I will pass it off to Michael if there's no questions.
All right. Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I just wanted to make a few highlights in the review of this project from a planning perspective. Has been, as it's been said before, this is, this project involves preservation of a landmark building, which fronts on Nassau Street. The most significant part of the building as, as determined by the, you know, you'll hear that in, from the applicant. What's interesting is that it involves adaptive reuse of this historic landmark. And the change in use will be from a mix of office and retail to a hotel with accessory retail. Another interesting factor is that existing retail businesses and professional services that were in ground floor spaces on Chamber Street have, some of them have been retained on the Nassau Street, street level spaces in the street spaces there. So that was an interesting way to try to keep some of our existing businesses and services in, in town. I wanted to also highlight that the new construction that you'll see and hear about that's going to be on Chamber Street is an interesting blend of the old and new, and it complements the original building, in my opinion. And it's an interesting sort of rethinking of how Chamber Street will work. As you know, some of the retail that has traditionally been on Chamber Street has struggled, and a lot of that has to do with the lack of foot traffic, the narrow sidewalk that's there presently, and, and limited parking. So you'll hear about how this is sort of a revisioning and, and reimagining of Chamber Street. Obviously, one of the major planning issues is its impact on the nearby Bank Street neighborhood. Even though this building fronts on our main commercial street, Nassau Street, it also is sort of an edge building because it's on the edge of the central business district and very close to a historic residential neighborhood. So the applicant has been working for over a year very closely with both staff and officials of the municipality, but also has made an extensive effort to meet with the neighbors, its neighbors on Bank Street. So you'll hear a lot about that in this evening as well. And I think it's been a great planning, community planning process from that perspective. And the final thing I just wanted to highlight is from economic development standpoint. As you know, our, particularly our central business district is in great need of anything that will sort of generate foot traffic and business traffic to support our existing businesses and services and attract new businesses to our vacant storefronts and spaces. A hotel is a wonderful addition to a downtown. So we were very eager to, to see how this would fit in to the historic fabric of Princeton and be a good neighbor to both Bank Street and to other adjoining areas near the downtown. So that'll be part of the discussion this evening as well. Princeton wants to capture some of the hotel trade that it loses to the Route 1 corridor and to some of our adjoining communities. So this is, that's an important economic development initiative. And again, retaining some of those businesses that were already in place on Nassau Street in this building on 20 Nassau, but is also giving a new home to some of the ones that were on Chamber Street was, was a really important component of, of what we were trying to do in partnership with the applicant in the early discussions. So you'll hear about that. And I think that's, I'll limit my comments to that for the time being, but thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for staff. Is there, can anybody give me some rationale for the limitations on stack parking?
What, what do you mean, Michael?
I, what, there's, the regulation says you have to have more than 100 spaces for the town, you know, the code to allow stack.
I, I think wanted it to, it was done probably 10 years ago, and I think they wanted it to be done in the existing garages. So they made the number large enough so that only existing garages could accommodate stacked parking. That's my guess.
Okay.
I, I have a question for the staff. I take it this will be the largest hotel in Princeton.
George, can you speak up, please?
Sorry, I'm, the question is, this will be the largest hotel in Princeton. Is that correct? And what's the second largest?
Well, I would, I think the Nassau Inn has more beds, has more rooms.
Right, yeah. And event venue.
So this would probably be the second largest, is my guess.
Okay.
Oh, yes, that's also an interesting point, that this will not have like a, a large ballroom or conference room like the Nassau Inn. This will be, this will have those kind of sort of conference facilities that most, that many larger hotels have.
Okay, Derek, are there any more, any other people we want to hear from first?
No, we just wanted to give a brief introduction and let the applicant start their presentation.
Okay. All right. Chris, if you'd like to begin?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate comments from Michael, Derek, and Jim. You guys kind of covered the basic application and the numbers. I thought maybe for the introduction, I could sort of take a step back. For the record, I'm Christopher D'Gresia from Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reef. As I said, I'd like to kind of talk a little bit about the project from a view up above. It has many different levels. Foremost, I think it really satisfies a need for a hotel in downtown Princeton. We do have a wonderful hotel, but there's only one. And there are a lot of people that would prefer to stay in the downtown area that are forced out to, you know, Plainsboro, South Brunswick, West Windsor, up and down Route 1. And this is a real nice location in an appropriate and permitted spot to be able to create and satisfy that need. This project is also, and you've heard this already, about historic preservation. We're lucky here in the sense that the owner of the property actually specializes in going in and taking these older buildings and through adaptive reuse and through restoration, they're able to preserve some of the important historic elements. And that's exactly what's going on here. They have not only people that have done this in, in other jurisdictions, but we have a team of local experts on historic preservation as well. This project is also about sustainability and aesthetics. In many ways, it's a beautification project, whether you're talking about the Chamber Street side where it's focused on the sidewalks and the streetscape, or even the rear side where you know, right now it's very industrial looking with discolored, discoloration and odd shaped windows all over the place, utilities that can't be run through the building on the outside of the building. So this adaptive reuse and renovation is focusing on some of the parts that are obsolete and basically creating a very beautiful environment. And we'll get into all of the little specifics through the testimony, but sustainability is another element, like a green roof. You know, even some of the programs they put in place, like a bike sharing program or bike program to cut down on traffic. Another layer or another level here is safety and accessibility. And when you take a look at the back portion that we are proposing to demo, it's, and you go through it, it's really an ADA nightmare. You have all these levels with different steps. You have hazardous, hazardous layouts for firefighters. There's really no way to salvage or make some of those areas adaptive for modern use. This new design essentially creates access for all. And as Michael indicated, the other part is an economic development initiative. That's a real big component of this. This will help strengthen the economics of downtown. It's going to revitalize Chamber Street. You probably, I don't know if you hear a couple decades back before the, the front facade where Jam and Crepes came in. I think it was Benefits at first. Now it's a coffee shop. That whole area used to be dead itself. It was very quiet. Used to get to Chambers. And after you walked by there, it was pretty much small, dark buildings, spaces. And now it's vibrant and lively along Nassau Street there with people outside. And they're going to create, the concept here is to create that same lively environment, very inviting. When I first met with Graduate Hotels, they were talking about creating it and access that's much like a living room so that people off the street will come in and feel comfortable and be able to experience the, you know, the setting that they create. So a lot of care and have thought has gone into this, and it's been a very sensitive approach. You know, looking at what the key issues are, understanding if traffic's a concern or parking's a concern, what can we do and what can we do at best? For example, track, parking is a huge win-win here. We have a building that's an office use. We're changing the use to hotel that essentially reduces demand. And then on top of that, we're creating 80 parking spaces to be used. So it's a really a win-win. And it's doing it in a way that those parking spaces are not even seen. So there's not a above-ground parking lot or structure, but it's hidden below in the basement. Yep, I'm sorry. I thought somebody interrupted. So anyway, this is, like I said, this project has many layers. I'm very excited to bring it here. We have a full team and a, and a pretty thorough presentation.
We went on, on the 12th. I just sent the email to everybody.
I think somebody, Claudia, your, your mic may be on. And I think as we go through this and you look at our presentation and exhibits, I think you will see how much care has gone into this project and how much you know, time and sensitivity has brought to, has been brought to the table. So with that, I would like to Karen, where are you? Karen, we have a number of professionals here. I thought maybe it would be best to actually have them not only sworn in but qualified. Can we do that? Because as we go through our presentation, they will have, you know, we will be going back and forth with different people depending on the slide. So I mean, it's up to you, but I think it would make it flow easier if we can get that all done up front.
We can, but you'll just need to go through each of your professionals. And if you want to qualify them now. So I, if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, let's take just a minute to do that or two. It's okay with everyone there. So I think, let's have all of them go through the oath. The first person's, I'm just looking at my list here, so I don't miss anyone, is Pablo David, who's a representative of Graduate Hotels. He's a fat witness, so we don't have to have him qualified, but he can be sworn in.
Mr. David, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our second witness will be Steve Oakley. Steve is a New Jersey licensed engineer. Steve, are you there? Can you tell us a little bit about your education and experience?
I'm an architect.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got to Tom O'Shea.
I did go to NJIT, so.
I'm sorry, Steve. Yeah, can you please tell us a little bit about your experience and?
Some experiences, I'm a second generation born in New Jersey architect. My father had a practice up in Bergen County for many years, retired down into Florida. My background is my education is from NJIT, which is now the Hillier College of Architecture and Arts. As far as presentation to planning boards, most of it has been in northern New Jersey, ranging from Parsippany to Rowway to North Bergen, New Jersey for different projects. Mix of hotels, pharmaceutical facilities for Shearing Plow and Merck over the years. I've been licensed for 34 years. And then Stonehill and Taylor is a practice that's, you know, focused on hospitality. Our strengths are adaptive reuse as well as preservation of historic buildings and sustainability. We introduced one of the first lead rated hotels in New York State a few years back. Locally to the project, we worked on the Asbury Hotel in Asbury Park, New Jersey. Did some work at the Hyatt Regency in New Brunswick and recently worked on the Aloft, which is a conversion of a bank building in Philadelphia. And we're pleased that, you know, this team also is in going to be opening the Cornell Tech Graduate Hotel on Roosevelt Island this coming year. So we've been working closely with Jill and Pablo and the team at Graduate Hotels, as well as Hunter Roberts, the construction manager for the project.
Mr. Oakley, you may have already said this, you're licensed in New Jersey?
Correct, yes.
All right. And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
And I I jumped the gun. Steve, does the board wish to accept Mr. Oakley as an expert grade?
I would think we could qualify you as an expert.
Thank you.
Um, I think I'm going to jump next to Brooke Core. Brooke, are you there? She is also at Stonehill. She's going to be testifying to a limited area of the sun study that she prepared. Brooke, are you are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. So can you tell us about your education and your license?
Yes, so I'm also an architect at Stonehill Taylor. I'm licensed in the state of New York. I have a bachelor of architecture with a minor in sustainability from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute up in Troy, New York. And on the various projects I've worked on when studying a project site conditions, I've commonly used, you know, sun path diagrams in conjunction with the sun shading capabilities of our 3D modeling software. And that just really lets us have a good understanding and can really explore the shading aspects of a specific site and project.
I think I think we can qualify you as an expert, I guess, in your field.
Thank you.
Chris, just a quick question. So you, Mr. Oakley and Josh Zinder, are your architects of record, correct?
We have a number of architects, so.
Okay, but Ms. Core isn't licensed in New Jersey, so I'm assuming she's not going to be the architect of record.
Steve Oakley.
No, she works under my domain.
Correct. Karen, Steve Oakley is the architect of record. He will be providing the architecture. I guess, information this evening. He signs the plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Karen, I don't think that that's not that's not problematic.
Ms. Core, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And next is our civil engineer, Tom O'Shea. Tom, can you give us a very brief?
I'm sorry, Tom O'Shea with a partner with the firm Van Ode Harvey in Princeton. Licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey for 34 years, same as Steve Oakley. I've done numerous projects in.
Excuse me, I don't I don't mean to interrupt you, Tom, but Tom, you've testified before many times, and you are certainly qualified as an expert and.
And still licensed, right, Tom?
That's right.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shade, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Our next consultants and witnesses are historic store consultants. We have Meredith Bizdak and Michael Mills from the same firm. They're going to be talking about two different aspects at during their testimony. Michael, Meredith, are you there?
Yes, we are.
We are.
Can you briefly go over your credentials?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
All right. Go ahead.
All right, I have a bachelor's degree from Princeton University in in architecture and urban planning. I have a graduate degree from Columbia University in their architecture program specializing in historic preservation. And I have a postgraduate certificate from the International Center in Rome, Italy for architectural conservation. I've been in practice since 1973. I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey since 1981. I'm licensed in many, many states and including New York, Pennsylvania, Washington DC, Massachusetts, and other places as well.
I think we can qualify you as an expert.
Thank you.
And if I would ask both of you, raise your right hand, you both swear your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Meredith, can you just give you yours for the record real quick?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. My name is Meredith Bizdak. I'm an architectural historian. I have a PhD in art and architectural history from Rutgers University. I've worked in the fields in the architecture field for 30 something years. I'm a partner with Mills and Schreing Architects and have worked with the firm and its predecessors for over 20 years. And have taught for many years in the art history department at Rutgers University in teaching art history.
I would think we can qualify you as well.
Thank you. Next up will be our local architect, Joshua Zinder. Josh, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Briefly, your license?
I've been licensed architect for over 25 years, 20 years in New Jersey. I presented this board and many other boards across the state. I got a bachelor of architecture from Syracuse University and a master's in advanced architectural design from Columbia University. And I'm going to be the AIA New Jersey president this coming year.
I would think, Josh, you've testified before before. You're more than qualified.
Jason, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be our professional planner, John McDonough. John, are you there?
Saw in the comments, he's saying let him in for this wear in.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's still in the attendees?
No, I'm here. I'm here. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay. John, can you give us some of your license experience and education?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Again, my name is John McDonough. That's spelled M C, capital D O N O U G H. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I testify in this capacity on a on a nightly basis throughout the state. Even more now so that we're doing this remotely. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. Allows us to testify nationally, and I'm also a licensed landscape architect. I am testifying in this application in both capacities.
Okay, have you I didn't catch it. Have you testified before this board before?
I have been here in Princeton before. I don't honestly don't remember if it was planning or zoning.
No, I I don't remember you before the board, but I think we can qualify you as an expert.
Thank you.
And Mr. McDonough, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Next up is George Jacamar. George, are you there? A traffic consultant?
Yes, good evening. My name is George Jacamar. I'm a principal with BFJ Planning. I have worked for about 40 years as a transportation planner, traffic engineer. I have testified in front of this zoning board and the planning board numerous times, starting in 1982. I have a degree from Europe in civil engineering, transportation engineering, from the Federal Institute of Polytechnic School in Roseanne, Switzerland, and a master's degree from Stanford University. I'm also a professional planner in New Jersey.
We, George, you testified before, we would qualify you as an expert.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacamar, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Next up would be Ryan. Are you there? Trying to find him.
Yes, I am here.
Oh, okay, great. Can you tell about your education expertise? State your and spell your last name for the record?
Sure. Hi, my name is Ryan Glotzbecker, spelled G L O T Z B E C K E R. I'm the owner and founder of Ramos, the acoustical consulting firm, which I started in in 2012. I've had 18 years of experience as an acoustical consultant and mechanical engineer. I have a bachelor's of engineering and mechanical engineering and a master's in acoustics from Pennsylvania State University. With my current firm, I consulted on projects across multiple market sectors, both nationally and internationally, including many hospitality projects. For this particular study, I'm presenting environmental noise study, an example of a project I did that. For that was I was part of the design team that engineered the noise control for Brooklyn Bridge Park. I have not testified before this board before, but have testified as an expert witness in court proceedings, arbitrations, and before multiple municipal boards.
Are you are you a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey?
No, I am not. There's not a professional qualification.
I I think we would qualify you as an expert.
Thank you.
Lots Becker, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so that gets through our our consultant list. I think we would like to move this on to our presentation. Pablo, do you have the presenting? Who's sharing the present? Oh, that's Steve, right, Steve?
Brooke has it.
Oh, Brooke, okay. I knew somebody did. Can we have the screen shared with Brooke Core?
Chris, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You said your your presentation will be going back and forth between different professionals.
They will.
Will it be broken up to the point that we can question these professionals at any particular time? How would we do that?
Yeah, I mean, we can we can certainly do that. We have a lot to cover, and I think what you'll find is we circle back because we have sort of a logical sequence to our presentation, Steve. So I mean, as board members, you guys can interrupt anytime. We would like to continue to keep things moving. So unless you have questions, we'll kind of go back and forth until you guys stop us or interrupt us because we do have something like 180 slides. So and and I guarantee you that, you know, 80% of the questions you have will be answered eventually. So, you know, that's why I'm saying if you kind of give us a little bit of leeway as we go through, I think you'll have those questions answered. And if not, you could interrupt at any time.
And maybe what we'll do is at, you know, in a certain period of time, well, I'll just ask if any of the board members would like to ask questions, and then we'll we'll keep it moving that way. But I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak.
Perfect.
Mr. Degrassi, you want this entire PowerPoint slide presentation as one exhibit?
Yeah, let's mark it as A1. It has 181 pages if you count the end page, and then we could refer to it by the page number that we're discussing.
Okay.
So that it's clear in the record. And yes, it's a PowerPoint presentation, like I said, I think 181 pages. And we could reference each page by the page number as we go along.
Okay.
I think we can share the screen with. Perfect. Okay, so that is our title sheet. Just do something here. There we go. So Brooke, can you just, I guess, everybody can take a quick look at that. If they haven't seen it, this is just a rendering. This is the project team. We went through and had a number of the people listed here already qualified and sworn in. But really, the point here is when you take a look at the project team, you see a huge mix of people with a lot of expertise, both on a national and a very local level. So even the team itself, there was a lot of thought put into who is there, what particular expertise they have. And this, you know, is along the lines of this very thought out and insensitive approach. So we have a great team with a lot of expertise in a lot of different areas. I think the next slide will start our presentation with our consultants, and we would like to start off with putting a face to the applicant and the owner of the property. Pablo David, he was already sworn in. Pablo, can you can you? Okay, there you go. You're sworn in, and I just wanted to turn the presentation over to you.
Thank you, Christopher, and thank you to all the board members for hearing our application and being here tonight. My name is Pablo David, and I am Vice President of Government Affairs and Community Relations for Graduate Hotels. And, you know, our goal is for people to reconnect to their past and to make new memories at the same time, but also learning about where they are. But, you know, ultimately, we want people to feel like they're at home. Next slide, Brooke. You can go ahead. This is this is our welcome sign at all our hotels. This message isn't something that we just believe in. It's something that we practice and always strive to get better at. Sense of inclusivity and and welcoming everyone to our hotel, no matter, no matter what.
And just to keep it going, we're on slide. That was slide five, and we are now on slide six.
And while we're located in university anchored communities, it's not just about the school. Next. It's also about the memories, the residents, and the history of the community. And now go ahead, next slide, Brooke. Thank you. And while, of course, we we want all our guests to come in for major university events, we also want them to come back simply because they've fallen in love with the communities that were located in. Something that's been touched on a couple of times tonight is that if this project is approved, visitors will have a real opportunity to stay in Princeton proper instead of Route 1 Hotel. With this hotel, if approved, and the Nassau Inn, it will lead visitors to activate retail and local restaurants. And it'll also represent a significant tax windfall for the municipality, along with the occupancy taxes associated with staying in Princeton. Something that this is unfortunately not being tapped into currently with people staying at hotels on Route 1.
So we're on slide 11, just to keep it, keep the pace. These are more just kind of pictures to help with the story, but I'm just kind of keeping it moving along. For the record, this is 11.
Thank you. As we we go through a process that brings alums, residents, and community experts together in order to bring the rich cultural heritage alive within the hotel. And we're really passionate about storytelling, and we believe that there are great stories to be told through this project. Oh, I lost my, we strive to bring something different, but at the same time, something wholly familiar to so many. And I mentioned before that starts with proactive community engagement and bringing in people who have not just attended Princeton, but that have also lived there, whether it's a year or or decades. We don't want our. We don't want our hotels to ever just be an amenity for our guests. We really want our hotels to be an extension of everyone's living room, whether it's students wanting to use our free Wi-Fi to study, old friends meeting up for a drink, or wanting to rent a bike from us. It's for everyone, not just our hotel guests. Our hotels strike a delicate balance of paying homage to the university that anchors a lot of the communities that we're in, but also the people that call it home. While the existence of the university plays a role in the design, the essentialities of the community can be seen throughout each one of our hotels. And these are some examples of our, our more historic hotels and ones that we've had adaptive reuse with. This is the graduate in Berkeley.
So this is page sixteen or slide sixteen? Now we're on seventeen?
Yes, the graduate in Providence, Rhode Island. The graduate in New Haven. And one of our more recently opened graduates in Evanston, which is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This list also encompasses some of our other projects that we've done throughout the history of the company, from the Chicago Athletic Association to graduate Palo Alto, which is currently under development, the Ponte Train in New Orleans, and the San Francisco Armory. It's just a, a list of examples.
And that's slide twenty?
Something that we're also really passionate about is our sustainability efforts that we take throughout our entire portfolio. And as, as a few people have mentioned before, you know, we, we try to be in locations where we aren't generating traffic and creating more congestion. We have bike rental programs that are open, not just for our guests, but for anyone within town that wants to come and fill out the paperwork and drop an ID off. They're more than welcome to rent one of our bikes to see the downtown areas. We've also teamed up many times with Madewell. It's a jean company for recycling of old denim. And we also have reusable coffee mugs that incentivize people to purchase those for a discount on coffee and reusable toiletry dispensers to cut down on plastic waste. With that, I will pass it over to Steve Oakley, our architect, and he'll speak about more of our sustainability efforts. Thank you.
So this is, this is slide twenty-three. Steve, you've already been sworn in and qualified.
Yeah, so building upon what Pablo had outlined as far as activities within the building related to the building, architecture, and systems, kind of the four key points of our strategic sustainability plan is designing to lead silver standards. We are doing some investigation into combining photovoltaics up on the rooftop with electric vehicle charging stations in the basement. Another large element of our contribution is the green roof. We've actually had some opportunities of putting green roofs into hotels where we have one that has a chicken named after each borough and also have added beehives to some of those environments as well to produce honey for onsite consumption. And then the last one is, you know, being a good neighbor, understanding, you know, the demolition that's involved, what it takes to get, put together a good construction plan, working with Hunter Roberts, and the planning that goes in with, you know, delivering a project within an urban environment. You know, recognizing there's a waste management component to the project. The next one is a bit of, you know, it doesn't have the snow cover of tonight, but kind of a little armchair tour around the neighborhood. You know, focused again on the corner of Chamber Street in Nassau, backing on to the Bank Street residential neighborhood. There is a small flag lot that runs out from the back of our building to Bank Street. It's about twelve foot wide. The major components of the building again are the twenty Nassau Street building, which is, you know, exists as a six-story building and has a one-story extension, which is where our construction would begin. Related to some of the renovation plans, the window air conditioning units that you see within the facade, we're looking to replace those. We're also looking to align the awnings into a common design element. There's some landscape and tree scapes that we're enhancing for some missing elements. And that applies also to the Chamber Street elevation, you know, building a uniformed aesthetic that runs down the street. Here you'll start to see some of the major issues related to the elevation and why some of the retail on Chamber Street has not survived very well. Each store is an independent entranceway, very difficult to get into. You walk in and hit a number of steps. And again, there is a six-foot elevation change across the whole length of Chamber Street. And here you see the existing loading dock, which is an area that we're going to be using to enter our auto court. And you can see there's a number of renovations or expansions that had taken place on the Chamber Street building over the years.
And Steve, can you just try to name the slide as you go through? So this is
Oh, sure.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one, correct. So thirty-two, again, just, you know, some photographs, elements of, you know, the width of the sidewalk and where the building's positioned. Next one is thirty-three or thirty-two, which is looking at Bank Street's elevation. So again, you can see some of the expression of additions over time. There used to actually be a way to pull a car in off of Bank Street. We understand from some of the people who have been with the building for quite some time. And, you know, random alignment of floors. You'll see the elevation change, which is some of the difficulty in, in saving that building or any sort of adaptive reuse. And this is a view from Bank Street, just looking back at the adjacent neighbors, the Chase Building and the Gunn Building on the corner of Bank and Nassau Street.
Okay, that's thirty-four. Now we are on thirty-five.
And Tom.
Tom O'Shea?
I'm here. Thank you, Steve and Chris. The next two plans that I'm going to speak from are in the, an application package that was submitted to the zoning board. This is sheet thirty-five, which shows the key map and vicinity map. And orienting us relative to the site is Nassau Street is to the south, Chambers is to the east, Bank Street is to both the west and north of the site. And the zones which surround the site is we're in Central Business District. And on Bank Street, you can see the R four. And the property is block nineteen point zero two. Lot seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Seventeen is the northernmost sliver. Eighteen has the finger that comes out to Bank Street and it's a paved driveway to the existing building. And nineteen is fronting Chamber Street and twenty is facing Bank Street. The total lot area is zero point six two acres. Next slide, please. Again, this is in the site plan package and this is an overall, next slide, slide thirty-six, please. Thank you. This is an overall site plan that shows the existing building, that portion being retained, and the portion of the building along Chamber Street being replaced. There's a couple of things of note here on the plan is along Nassau Street on the, on the south and Chamber Street. We have been asked and we will have the Nassau streetscape location or sidewalk along both. Of note is along Chamber Street, we have indentations along the building, you can see it, where we're providing a greater walking space. And with the lighting plan, which you'll see later, we're going to replace a couple of the light fixtures in the sidewalk that will also aid for the walking space along Chamber Street. The entry to the motor court is on the north side of the site and that will be the entry for vehicle parking as well as entry into the hotel. There is a rectangular area that's known or noted as a stormwater management cover. And really what that is, is we're making sure that we don't have an open air motor court below and mixing rainwater with the motor court area. The green roof is on about fifteen percent of the rooftop. And later on the presentation, you'll see how that lays out on the new portion of the building. All utilities will be underground. And in one point in particular that the municipality asked for is during construction or completion of construction, they've asked us to, and we've agreed to mill Chambers, Chamber Street and repave it. And the brick crosswalks at both the south and the north end will be replaced. And our extension on the south end, or excuse me, the north end is the south side of Bank Street. I pass it on to the next slide.
Okay, that was thirty-six. Now we are on thirty-seven. And I believe Meredith, you're going to talk to this?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Christopher. Pablo has already explained the history of the site is very important to graduate hotels. So I'm going to offer a little bit more about the history of the building. And first of all, it was built nineteen twenty-five, nineteen twenty-six. And the architect was a man named Laramore Van Velser Sweetsy, who was a New York architect, known for designing apartments and factory buildings, but generally not particularly well-known. And we don't have an established connection to Princeton, so I'm not quite sure how he ended up designing this building. But as designed in the colonial revival style, very simple colonial revival, it was stores and offices to begin with and has remained so over time. The colonial revival style distinguished it from the collegiate Gothic that was being used across the street at the university. And what you're looking at here is a rendering by Sweetsy on the left that shows the five-story main block and another artist's rendering on the right. And we note that the focus of both of these renderings is really on the main Nassau Street block, the five-story block that would, will be preserved through this project and that the rear elevations are really barely rendered. So if we can have the next slide, Brooke. We're looking here at the nineteen twenty-seven Sanborn map of Princeton that shows the building. Nassau Street is at the bottom there with Chamber Street on the side. And it shows the building as it was built in three sections. They were built all at one time, despite the fact that it may look like they were built in several different periods. But the front piece, the five-story main block with eleven bays, with a two-story garage behind it, and then a two-story warehouse to the rear, what says vacant warehouse here. There was a, in the garage, there were three storefronts and those were framing two ramps that provided entrance into the garage. A little bit of history on the building and its occupants. It was purchased by Princeton University in nineteen thirty-two, mainly for investment purposes and for them to use for some office space. In nineteen thirty-three, the Institute for Advanced Studies, which had been founded in nineteen thirty, moved into twenty Nassau Street. And faculty member Oswald Veblen had an office in the building. In nineteen thirty-seven, the institute purchased the guest library, the East Asian Cultural Library, and moved it into the lower level of twenty Nassau where it sat, until it moved over to Princeton University later on. But over time, other tenants have included Gallup Hall, the College Entrance Exam Board, which became Educational Testing Service, Cops Bicycle Shop, and other university-related tenants. And then finally, in the nineteen forties, Educational Testing Service really wanted to expand their holdings within this building and did end up expanding the building and doing much of the renovation, the early renovation on it. And they purchased the building from Princeton University in nineteen forty-eight and added the third story to the garage and the warehouse wings at that time. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the history, but I think Michael's going to talk more specifically.
So Michael, we are on slide thirty-nine right now?
Okay, I can't read the slide number, so.
Yes, I will for you. This is slide thirty-nine and Michael Mills is speaking.
Thank you, Chris. Meredith and I have been delighted to assist GP and J and Stony Hill Taylor with Heritage Consulting and with a preservation plan for twenty Nassau Street. Briefly, twenty Nassau will be preserved and renovated for compatible use as a hotel, which you've already heard. The significance and the architectural integrity of the main block on Nassau Street will be maintained through the preservation of its essential form, materials, and its fenestration. Because of the lack of integrity and code conformance of the rear wings along Chamber Street, which Josh will speak to a little bit later, they will be replaced with new construction, which is architecturally compatible and supports the new use of the main block on Nassau Street. Most of the preservation plan is related to the treatment of the building envelope, as most of the interior features are not considered to be character-defining. So I'll start with these two images, the roof and cornice. The copper mansard roof, the built-in gutters, and the terracotta cornice were recently restored by one of the top contractors for historic roofs in, in our region. We have no reason to suspect that there are any materials or workmanship issues with the installation and they shall remain and be preserved. The flat roof above the main mansard will be utilized for new HVAC equipment set well back from the roof edge as to be invisible. And Steve will talk about that. The exterior brick masonry of the, I'm sorry, I should talk about the windows. The windows in the original building will be replaced to match the historic design. It's expected that the original frames will, for the most part, remain on the exterior and only the window units themselves will be replaced. They will consist of new exterior clad wood sash of commercial grade, having insulated glass for better energy conservation. They'll be twelve over twelve, same design as the original. And the Muntons and Mullians will exactly match the profile of the existing windows. And as Steve mentioned, all of the window air conditioners will be removed, which will allow for full restoration of the sash. You can see from this image, there's been a lot of deterioration and changed conditions with the windows. There's many that are missing, damaged by air conditioners, not energy efficient. And there's also lead paint issues, which is leading to the replacement by, by something that matches. Next slide, please.
This is forty.
The exterior brick masonry of the front facade facing Nassau Street and the east facade facing Chambers are in remarkably good condition. The mortar joints are tight, well-struck and serviceable. It's not anticipated that the entire building will need repointing, but it does need cleaning to remove soiling and residue due to pollution. There are two conditions that require further work. The piers that frame the storefronts on Nassau typically exhibit vertical cracks, which you see here on these two images. We remove some mortar and steel flanges immediately behind the face brick could be seen. And it's likely that this embedded steel is rusting and which causes expansion of the metal and rust jacking of the masonry. So the traditional repairs to remove the cracked brick, remove the rust to bare metal, prime the steel with a rust inhibitive coating, and rebuild the original masonry with the brick and mortar to match the original. I'll talk about the, the brick in a second. Next slide, please. Several steel lintels over windows exhibit rust, rusting with spalled bricks at the bearing points. All of the lintels All of the lintels will be inspected and treated as needed, like the other embedded steel. Any spalled bricks and mortar will be replaced in kind. And if possible, replacement brick will be reused from one of several areas of the one story Chamber Street section, which does have a brick, brick to match. Next. Well, the red brick is of standard size and mostly deep red with some purplish bricks mixed in. If required, any new brick will match the size, color and texture of the existing. And we've already obtained samples of, of a compatible, not compatible, a matching brick from Church Brick in Borden Town, a match can easily be made. And these are the, the two brick types that would be utilized, the reddish and the purplish brick. We had a conservator, materials conservator test the mortar and also do paint analysis in the building so that we can match the historic colors and textures of both the paint and the, and the masonry. Next. The storefront windows facing both Nassau and Chambers appear to be original and consist of decorative copper frames supported by large, supporting large glass panels. The frames have been painted at various times, but were recently stripped and refinished. They're in fair condition, but they need some work, some conservation and repair work. The intention is to keep them as exposed copper. So where they've been painted, that the white paint would be removed and the copper would be, would be restored. To provide better thermal efficiency, we'll be replacing them with insulated glass units, glass itself. There are several types of fabric awnings over the storefronts that are in various states of repair. All of the awnings and frames will be replaced with new consistent awnings of a suitable color on retractable frames. And that's in line with comments that we received from, from Sprab. Next.
So we're on, that was forty three. We are now on forty four.
And as Steve mentioned, in order to remove the window air conditioners as part of the facade restoration program, new rooftop HVAC equipment will be installed. The units and air handlers will be collected behind a low penthouse screen on the main roof as far from Nassau and Chambers as possible. And the equipment will also be located on the hyphen roofs, which you see on the right here. And the raised parapet, which is highlighted here in yellow, will be lowered to its historical condition at, to the original coping, which was a comment that we received from the Historic Preservation Commission. Next. And the equipment will be nearly invisible from the sidewalks. These sightline drawings illustrate that point. This is looking up at the hyphen from Chamber Street, from across the street. And I believe that's my last slide, Chris. Goes on to Josh.
Yep. Hello, I'm Joshua Zinder, an architect in town and a longtime tenant of the twenty Nassau Street building. So I know this building inside and out quite well. Michael and Meredith offered the preservation argument. Now I'm going to give the demolition one. The Chamber Street side of twenty Nassau Building, we can reference this part of the building as two to four Chamber Street, was originally designed as two separate buildings that had radically different uses than they currently have today. As a result, the building is a patchwork of poor circulation and spaces. There are at least eight distinct floor levels in the three story structure. The structure is a rabbit worn of different levels, different stair and ramp levels and ceiling heights. Most areas in the building are not along an accessible route. The adaptation of the mushroom column and flat plate concrete structure to make it accessible and to have coherent floor plates for hotel use would be virtually impossible, especially if it were to realign itself with the historic Nassau Street structure. Next slide is forty eight. So it's slide, slide forty eight. The exterior of two and four chambers building is a reflection of the fractured interiors, a patchwork of every repair and modification over time. Not one of these considering the previous brick or mortar color. The exterior surface is a home for a myriad of exterior exposed conduits and wires. The windows on Chambers and on Bank Street are random patchwork from one over one to twelve over twelve Muntan patterns with wooden vinyl double hung windows to rusted steel, rusted through steel windows. Some of the windows on the Chamber Street side have been filled with different brick types, sometimes reflecting the particular addition to the building, but not always. The Bank Street openings are more than chaotic. Fenestration has been blocked up with painted CMU or painted plywood and on occasion, brick and stucco infill. Additions and modifications reflect three brick types, sometimes painted and stuccoed, illustrating five distinct finishes. Overall, the impression the existing structure creates is a disorderly eyesore for historic, for historic Bank Street. The two to four Chamber Street section of twenty Nassau Building illustrates little of architectural interest, craftsman like care or historic significance of its Nassau Street partner. It is clearly the, in the best interest of the town to maintain the historic Nassau Street structure. It is equally significant and clear that the two to four Chamber Street structures are past their useful life and hinder the character of both Bank Street and Chamber Street. Next. Back to Steve.
So this is slide number forty nine and the next twenty six, we started looking at the building design. The building design has been an interesting collaboration of four architects and architect in Chicago, Josh and, and Michael's team as well. So we've kind of outlined a strategy. What Josh has explained here is the organization of the existing Chambersheet building shown here in kind of the salmon color and, and the preservation of twenty Nassau Street in the yellow. And again, the twenty Nassau Street has a full basement level and then also has an extension which has some mezzanine areas. Next slide, Brooke. So our main thing is, you know, the demolition of the building would be done strategically. There is some excavation we have to do for providing parking in the basement. There is a partial basement that is also, would have to be demolished and replaced in, in kind. And then there's a strategic tie in location that we have both at the basement level, first floor. And then the main component of the architecture of the hotel expansion aligns with the floors that exist in twenty Nassau Street. So getting back up to grade, you know, the main organization we're looking at within the building was creating these A B arrangements, the A being where we have the red brick component in order to create a modulated scale as we went down Chamber Street and had the opportunity to release in the B zones related to metal and glass enclosure with an open connected bridge, as well as a little different articulation for some guest rooms that are in the, the center of the building, just above the entrance canopy. And these are then a kind of a floor by floor stacking. It's a double height first floor, then we move on to a second floor through fifth floor hotel rooms. And then we, you know, complete everything with a, a green roof assembly on top of the Chamber Street building. The roof structure of twenty Nassau wouldn't support it. So as a massing element against the neighborhood, you know, it has a, a strong contextual feel related to twenty two chambers, the church across the street. And again, here you'll see the main expression of the three architectural brick enclosed punch window blocks interrupted by the metal and glass facing the Chamber Street and bringing across the awnings Nassau Street. We are fully screening all the equipment on the rooftop. And what you see, there are some elevator and stair bulkheads that go up to the rooftop.
Excuse me, what's, what slide number is this?
This is sixty.
Sixty, thank you.
Yep, sixty, sir.
Okay.
Just as Michael explained, you know, looking at the view relationship from street level, main element is everything screened and set back some distance off of the edge of the parapets, the mansard on twenty Nassau Street, both facing Nassau and Chambers. And, you know, showing the relationship of the aligned floors between the existing twenty Nassau Street and the Chambers expansion. And you can start to see some of this topography change that runs down Chamber Street that we kind of rebalance at the hotel entrance in the middle of the expansion.
This is Stephen Treiber. Can I interrupt for a minute?
Oh, sure.
Derek, I'm losing connectivity periodically and going offline for two or three minutes and then it automatically reconnects. Am I the only one that that, that's happening to?
I, I had a weak signal. This is Steve Cohen. I had a, an indication of a weak signal, but it only lasted seconds a few times.
I've lost it three times now for a couple of minutes each time. Maybe I'm the only one. Maybe it's something here in my house.
I haven't heard from anyone else, Steve. I, I haven't had an issue yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. You may have to go back and listen.
Next slide, Brooke. And then, you know, as explained, we, we had our presentation with the HPC. Recognizing that, you know, we wanted to fit contextually, continue with the brick after finding a matching brick color and, and brought that expression across over to the Chamber Street facade. Main element we also wanted to introduce was a uniformed first floor level, which creates a, you know, a story and a half open lobby on Chamber Street. Other elements we're doing is we're doing slight recesses and creating these exposed pile asters. So we're creating a little relief along Chamber Street to, you know, effectively widen the sidewalk. We've looked into, you know, some marquee elements on the canopy, also some signage that Josh will explain at the corner of Nassau and Chamber Street. But again, the articulation is really, you know, comes from just trying to rescale the mass, not overwhelm the Chamber Street facade and be, be a good neighbor. Main element that came out of our HPC review was, you know, just some rescaling dimensionally of the windows into the hotel rooms. So there was a slight reduction of taking it from about a four foot eight width down to a four foot width. But, but again, holding some of the heights that are a little differential. And some of the detailing is a little different in that we're using, you know, express header stones and, you know, a slight differential. The mansard only slopes on the front face. On the side, it becomes a facade element, which also helps with the scaling of the building that you'll see from the Bank Street and the side, side elevations.
And Steve, this is slide sixty three.
So sixty four starts looking at the planning elements of the project. Again, as we explained, the yellow area is the Nassau Street, which is a mix of food and beverage retail, as well as I think the barber shop just went in. So it has some service retail as well. And our goal is to keep that in place, which has certain elements of us maintaining some existing air conditioning units above it. Main element for vehicle arrival is to the north of the site using what is currently the existing loading dock. Instead of going downhill, you go up a slight incline to approach the auto court at the back of the building. We have opposing entrances with a check in centrally located. This floor has, you know, some service elements as far as kitchen refuse and more detailed plans a little later on. At the lower level of the twenty Nassau, we're going to reclaim some spaces for our back of house operations for hotel employees or their break areas, cafeteria. There's a small F and B venue that we're providing facing the corner of Chambers and Nassau. That's accessible off of a doorway on Nassau Street that exists as well as a way to get into from Chamber Street. There's a door, mostly would be used by the service staff. And again, there's some storage occupied by some of the retail stores that we would maintain through the project. A main element you're also looking at here is the stacked and valet parking that's served by a one way ramp that would have a control at the top and bottom to coordinate the movement of vehicles from the auto court down into the lower level. Some small mechanical rooms that would handle our ventilation requirement, which is, which is minimal when we do valet parking versus a, a public parking garage. And you, you'll see some service elements, there's stairs and elevators that are accessible to this level.
And Steve, for the record, this is slide sixty five that you were describing in the basement plan.
So slide sixty six brings us, you know, to the first floor level. Start to demonstrate what we're doing as far as a, a loading. We've provided a, you know, a service parking space for a truck to back into the property. The main components we have is refuse removal, probably three times a week, linen delivery and then food and beverage also arriving. Those would be coordinated to be in off peak hours, which, you know, hotel kind of puts it more or less in the middle of the afternoon related to check ins and checkouts timing between eleven and, and three o'clock. Again, George will give you a little more detail about the maneuvering within the auto court. But our intent was to provide the ability for an Uber or a cab to come in unobstructedly, make a loop where they could drop people off behind with the intent of getting our vehicles off of Chamber Street, realizing that if, you know, they started stopping on Chamber Street and moving luggage or anything like that into the hotel, it would be an obstruction for the, that's travel on that side. And then, you know, there's a ramp at the top. This is the mezzanine level, which is mostly a back of house mechanical and housekeeping and some small management offices. Also connects into the existing mezzanines that exist within twenty Nassau Street. And the X is a double height volume, as well as the auto court is about a double height volume. The lobby itself is a double height volume facing Chamber Street. One of the changes is we did adjust from one hundred and ninety one rooms was our original application. We are down to one hundred and seventy eight. The main element that changed a lot of this was, you know, the meetings that we've been having with the Bank Street neighborhood as well as HPC and really affected this back corner where we made a decision to set back the building off of that residential zone, clear the ten foot radius of the residential district and then effectively reducing the height of the existing building from about thirty two feet to twenty foot of height adjacent to the eleven and thirteen Bank Street. You'll see that here is the stormwater management area, the gritted area, which also is a skylight to bring some illumination down to the guest arrival at the auto court. The plan is pretty straightforward, double loaded corridor. One of the organization tools we had was, we have oriented the windows toward inner courts versus putting a large amount of windows facing Bank Street from a standpoint of light control into the residential area, as well as just, you know, discussions we've had with them. Now you can see here at the inner court between the Nassau Street and Chamber Street building is the mechanical equipment that we will be keeping in place to maintain the occupancy of the retail at the first floor. And then this plan repeats for about four levels. Some of the adjustments aside from rooms dropped off the back was, we've added some suites to some of the corners. And again, to highlight, the hotel has no event or ballroom venues. It's, you know, mostly a rooms hotel with a lobby lounge at the lobby level and that small F and B venue at the cellar.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question? This is Steve Cohen. On one of your earlier slides, you, you cut back the northernmost wing. I see that that cutback is, comes out at what elevation? In other words, the small remaining triangular piece that comes down to grade will be right on the property line, but the wall above it, is that, that's from the second level up?
Correct. That's the, with a line with the second floor, about twenty feet above the. Correct. That's the, with a line with the second floor, about 20 feet above the neighboring property.
You've still got, you've still got the wall, the 20, a 20-foot wall on the property line on the...
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we have some slides that review kind of as a bright condition and an existing condition that we'll get into.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this is just, you know, understand the mechanical. Everything is screened. Ryan will present the acoustic investigation that we've done related to rooftop equipment, as well as the auto court. We spent some time on that. Slide 74, 75, again, just kind of highlighting the activation that the graduate hotels are looking to bring to Nassau Street, rentable bikes to the public, reinforcing a large visible lobby and lounge and restaurant, and maintaining, of course, the existing businesses on Nassau Street. One of the important other elements is we are going to keep for the hotel an entranceway into the hotel off of Nassau Street, which is kind of highlighted in the middle of the facade there that would get you access into the hotel lobby.
So this is slide 75.
Was this John McDonough?
Excuse me.
Oh, sure.
Is that the conclusion of the...
That's the conclusion of the architecture, but there is some more that will come up on Bank Street.
Okay, but let me just, let me just ask at this point, are there any board members that want to question anything to date from Mr. O'Shea or the architect at this point? Okay, all right. If there's nobody, none of the board members want to comment, we'll continue on, please.
I come back at 1:04.
All right. So next up is John McDonough, who's going to talk about landscape at this point. Slide 76, I think he's starting at. John, are you there? Let's see. Well, John's in North Jersey, so I'm wondering if he got hit by a little bit more snow than expected. Let me see if he's on attendees rather than the panelists. Okay, so what I suggest is we skip a little. Unless, let me just see if I'm getting an email or something from him. Nope. Okay, so I guess what we'll do is we'll skip forward a little. Maybe someone else on our team could try to, try to track him down. In the meantime, we were looking at, let's go to parking. So we'll come back to landscape. So we're going to skip forward from 76 to slide 79. And we're going to have George Jacomar talk about parking.
Yes, parking and traffic. I basically will talk about three elements here tonight. One is the change in parking demand and parking supply on this particular site. The second element will be the design and operation of the interior court. And then the third element will be the traffic impacts and the studies that we did in regards to traffic generation and related traffic elements. This particular slide, you can see in the table on the left, you know, what is the parking demand today? And when we say today, that's basically the building as it was pre-pandemic, where it was practically fully occupied. That building, which was largely office space and some retail commercial space, had a parking demand of 190 spaces. And that's based on the zoning code of the Princeton zoning code. So basically, and there was no supply on site. So basically, there were roughly 190 cars that were parking somewhere in the downtown area related to this building, because there were no spaces on the site itself. And that parking demand was a demand that took place primarily during the day. So it was basically roughly, you know, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. when that parking demand peaked. So there was a shortage of 190 spaces. And the column on the right for the future building, you see first that the total parking demand will be slightly less. Instead of 190, it will be 165 spaces. And that's because the hotel has slightly lower parking demand than the office spaces. And what's important, you know, and zoning does not take that into consideration. What's important is that the future building, you know, the parking will, of the hotel will peak during the night. And during the day, the parking demand will be roughly half, is a little bit less than half of the demand is during the night. So that our parking demand during the day is estimated to be for 91 spaces. And the parking supply, as was mentioned earlier, you know, the number of parking spaces in the basement is 80 spaces. So that we would have a parking shortage as per zoning of 85. But during the key day, you know, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. on weekends, the parking shortage would be only 11 spaces. So if you compare that 11 to the existing building, the shortage of 109, we basically improve the parking situation in this particular area of downtown Princeton by 179 spaces. So that's a significant positive impact in terms of parking availability in the downtown area. It's equivalent to building a new parking deck by itself of 179 spaces. So we feel that's a very important positive impact for downtown businesses and the general, you know, accessibility of the downtown. You'll see here on the upper right is the layout. And I think we want to point out, we did cut back the corner a little bit. Brooke, if you can point that out on the drawing there in the corner, we cut that back a little bit in consideration vis-à-vis the neighbors. The next slide, then, we look at the actual parking demand of the graduate. The numbers that I mentioned, you know, a minute ago are all numbers that are based on the Princeton zoning requirement. And the zoning requirement for hotels in downtown Princeton is relatively high. It's kind of, it was when it was developed in the very late, in the late 70s. It was based on a detailed study that was undertaken, a detailed survey that was undertaken in downtown Princeton. That was basically based on the parking demand of the Nassau Inn at that time. So what we are saying here is that the actual parking demand of the graduate will be significantly less than what the zoning would require. Here you can see the parking ratios, and here we talk about the number of spaces per hotel room, per guest room. You can see for the various spaces, the number, the average num parking ratio, the maximum ratio that was surveyed during a 12-month period. They range, you know, you can see in Berkeley was 0.22. So for 100 rooms, they had 20 cars parked. And the, you can see the parking, the maximum parking ratios for the various hotels. In this case, they range from 0.2 to 0.38 is the highest. And this hotel with the 80 spaces that are proposed has a parking supply of 0.45. That means for 100 rooms has 45 spaces. So we have more spaces here, a better parking ratio than all the other graduate hotels that are surveyed and that are shown on this particular table. So we feel that even though it does not satisfy the zoning requirement completely, it does satisfy the actual demand that will be realized in the future for the graduate hotel. The next slide, and now we're at slide 81. We start talking about the circulation of the interior court. We, this particular slide shows what we call the preferred option. So circulation is counterclockwise, which generally is the easier way for drivers to circulate in a, you know, constrained area, because the driver sits on the side that's the most critical in terms of the circulation. If you look at the cars and, you know, many cars have scratches on the right side, not on the left side, because the right side is more difficult to, to, to control. My mother always had scratches on the right side and I'm on the left side. So that's why we like counterclockwise circulation. And we organize it here so we have up to nine spaces. And these, we call them queuing spaces. They're not queued in a line, because the design would not allow it. But they're queued in, you know, various positions where cars that come into the hotel and cars that leave the hotel can get in or out of, you know, the majority of these spaces, depending on the way, which direction they come from. The next slide, and the next slides, we show how cars get in and out of the various spots. So here we look at the spaces 1, 2, 3, which are the spaces on the left side of the court. You can see one movement shows a car that comes in from Chamber Street and goes into space number one. And then the other movement you can see is the vehicle that comes from the basement. So that would be a vehicle that goes out. And how the valet would then park the car, you know, always circulating in the counterclockwise manner in position number two. You can see that the maneuvers, they work out. It's not very luxurious in terms of maneuvering space, but it works in, without having to back up the car. The next slide shows similar maneuvers for the spaces 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Again, you can see those cars that come in. You know, the hotel guest comes from Chambers, drives into slot number five. He goes out, leaves a key with the valet and goes to check in. The valet backs out the car and then drives it into the basement. And then you see a similar maneuver for a vehicle that exits, that leaves the hotel, how it's transferred from the valet to the hotel guest. The, only the valet people will drive into the basement. It's a one, it's two-way, one-lane circulation because of the constraint of the site. And that's why it would only be operated by valet operators. No guest would drive into the basement. No employee would drive into the basement. The next slide shows something else that we want to achieve here. We want to design this interior court so that taxis, Ubers, lifts can drive in and out in one swoop maneuver. So we don't have to come into the court and back, back, you know, do forwards and backwards maneuver. You can see here, and it's for a kind of a standard car that's 201 inches long, that this maneuver can be done by a taxi, an Uber vehicle. Again, I think for, we try everything we can to make it as easy as possible for vehicles to come in to drop off or pick up passengers in this interior court and minimize the impact on the surrounding streets, whether that's Chambers, Nassau, or even Bank Street. We, the next slide. So here we look at various options. And these options were developed, developed at the request of the neighbors. You can see here we insert a wall at the westerly corner that would respect that 10-foot setback. And we still maintain the counterclockwise circulation. We rearrange some of the cars in the upper right corner. You can see we put two cars in that upper right corner so that we still maintain the nine queuing spaces in this particular area. And then the next slide, and we're now at slide 86, shows how this circulation scheme becomes very, very difficult. You can see, you know, the area that's colored there. The car that needs to get into that particular spot cannot make it in one maneuver. You can see this looks like three or four maneuvers in order to get into that one side. The car on the upper, the other side can get in and out. But, you know, the cars that are on the lower part of the court cannot get in and out in one maneuver. The next slide shows also for vehicles going into space eight and nine. Those cars cannot make that U-turn in one maneuver. They have to do a backing maneuver back and forth. So that is a complication, something that would discourage vehicles to use that court area. The next slide, there's for the taxi that would come in. Also, they cannot make the maneuver in one, the turn in one single maneuver. They have to back up and go forward again. Next slide shows another option. So this is a different design where instead of having the central area, kind of central island of parked spaces, the vehicles will be parked on the edges. So that's option C, and we're talking about slide number 89. And the next slide shows, again, you know, similar constraints for the vehicles to get in and out of those parking spots. You know, they cannot be made in one single maneuver. That's for spots 4 to 7. The next slide shows complications. So this here is for spots eight and nine in the upper right-hand corner. So that's, I would say, an unsafe hazardous maneuver, because the car that you can see there that's colored, the area that's colored, the driver that's backing out cannot see where they're backing out. So we consider that as an, it's not just a complicated maneuver, but it's a hazardous maneuver, because the driver cannot see where they're backing into. Next slide. And similarly for taxis, taxis can't make the U-turn in one maneuver. They have to do like a K-turn in that court. And I think we have another slide. So this is what we call option D. It's slide number 93. And here we test the clockwise circulation. And just to see how that would function, if that would function better or not. And again, you can see in the next slide that we do have complications, you know, similar complications to get in and out. We have more conflicts of vehicles that cross path to get in and out of the clockwise maneuver. This is for the spaces 1, 2, and 3 on the left side of the interior court. You can see it's more difficult to get in and out. Next slide. And similarly for spaces 4 and 7. Again, this design, you know, does have that wall that respects the 10-foot setback from the neighboring property. So that's the key element that we're testing. We're trying to test if we can have a convenient and safe circulation pattern in the interior court with a 10-foot wall. And as you can see, it is not a good solution. It's not the safe solution and the convenient solution. Next slide, I think, shows also for space eight and nine. Again, those vehicles pulling out would not have good visibility. They would not see at all if there's a vehicle circulating along that wall. And then here we show for the taxi, U-turn. Again, that vehicle cannot make the U-turn in one maneuver. It takes two maneuvers to do it. So I think those are all the slides about the interior court. And the conclusion is that, you know, we feel that what we call the preferred option is really better and does optimize the operation of the court. Makes it more convenient and much safer. And by that, and through that, will maximize the use of the interior court and minimize the use of the public streets that surround this proposed hotel. So that's why we feel that it is, you know, the best solution in that regard. Also vis-à-vis the neighbors in the sense that it will definitely minimize the use of Bank Street. I know there's concern about, you know, that some of the traffic may overflow into Bank Street, but we feel that this solution is the best in that regard. So the next point, I want to address some of the traffic comments, the traffic studies we did.
Can I, can I just interrupt and just ask a question? I agree with a lot of your conclusions here. But focusing on option C, which is the, you know, let's say the best of the alternatives, where you put the 10-foot wall in and respected the setback. It seems to me that, that a lot of what you achieved in the original solution can be achieved in this if the... Can be achieved in this if the stair and the elevator were shifted down towards Chamber Street a little bit. To make up for that ten-foot, uh, setback issue. So did you look at anything like that? Because there would be, again, you'd be replacing the ten-foot, uh, to the east. And, uh, obviously respecting that setback.
We, we should, I think, to address your point, we should look at option B.
Okay.
You know, because I think option B does maintain the circular circulation. So that, that is the one, you know.
Okay.
I would look at, you know, the, it really gets a little bit out of my domain. Because it affects the operation of the hotel.
This is really, this is really for the architect to discuss the impact.
We can, we can address that later then if you'd like. It was a question both to George and the architect, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. So in terms of the traffic comments, we don't have any, uh, oh, we have, the only exhibit we have, I think, is an aerial or map of the neighborhood. Uh, yes, here we have the map, you know, it's Chamber Street and the lower part of the drawing Nassau Street on the left. Uh, you know, we did do a traffic study, uh, that we submitted originally. We did get a number of comments on them and then we went back into the field. We counted pedestrians. We, we adjusted the pedestrians for the pre-pandemic conditions. By looking at the past pedestrian counts and so on. To, uh, you know, cal- look at the traffic impacts, um, uh, of the proposed project. And basically, and we had mentioned that at the very beginning. On the weekday, this particular project, this future project generates less traffic than the traffic that was generated when. Uh, by the previous building, you know, when it was largely an office building. Uh, during the weekday peaks, it was in the range of thirty to forty percent. If I remember correctly, less traffic during the peak hours. Uh, and, uh, your traffic consultant recommended that we look at Saturday, which we did then. And on Saturday, the peak hours are roughly the same. It's the hotel would generate maybe two vehicle trips more during the Saturday peak hour than the previous building. And that's based on IT traffic generation rates. Um. Uh, so that's on the Saturday traffic generation. We did address that and we submitted to your consultant. Um, we also addressed questions that came up regarding overall parking conditions in downtown Princeton on Saturday evenings. Uh, based on the study that was performed for the municipality by Nelson and I got. There were some, uh, um, some questions raised. Because when Nelson and I got did the study, uh, some of the Palmer Square garages were closed. Because there was some renovations, so they could not go in and they marked them as, as fully occupied, which it, it was not. And we did, you know, subsequent analyses and, uh, we concluded that there is, you know, uh, available parking capacity in downtown on Saturday evenings. Um, so that is documented in the response that we provided to, to the town. We also looked at the, the kind of peaking that may occur on the interior court. Now, the typical day during a morning peak or evening peak. Uh, there would not be many vehicles in the interior court. It's, you know, they tend to be between two and three vehicles that may be there at the same time. You know, in that queuing area, either queuing to come into the hotel or queuing to leave the hotel. Uh, and, and we recognize, you know, there will be times when that, uh, there will be greater activity. And where those peaks may be, you know, needing four or five cars, possibly six, seven cars, depending on the, the activities. But the, what's important to realize is that the peaking, the surges that would happen. And not so much related to activities in the hotel. They're more related to overall, you know, surges of activities that happen in Princeton related to, you know, commencement at the university. And other events at the university where. So that's why we feel that, you know, the interior court should accommodate about eight or so cars in that queuing space. And again, we like to see queuing capacity for inbound vehicles as well as for outbound vehicles. You know, vehicles that, of the guests that are leaving the hotel. Uh, we also looked at the impact and you can see it here on this, uh, figure. The left turn lane from Nassau to turn from Nassau into Chamber Street. So we calculated by adding the traffic that would be generated by the hotel. To the existing traffic volumes driving through that intersection. And, and when I say existing, these were traffic, traffic counts that we did in October two thousand nineteen, pre-pandemic. So they were, you know, uh, relatively high compared to what's there today. And, uh, we calculated that the queue of vehicles making the left turn into Chambers. Is barely affected by the addition of a tower. It's a, it's a tiny, you know, and these calculations are based on, uh, car lengths. And it's not even a full car length, you know, that would be affected, uh, that would be increased here. So we feel that, uh, the impacts will not be significant at this intersection. The other point I want to mention, these are all worst-case analysis in the sense we did not take out any traffic. That was generated by the hotel, by the existing building, pre-pandemic. Uh, partially because we don't know exactly where those vehicles park and, and how they affect that left turn lane. But, you know, I'm sure some of them did use that left turn lane. We did not take on it, any traffic, you know, to reflect those vehicles that would be taken out of the area. And I think the final point that we discussed with your consultant and, and your staff. Is that the hotel, the graduate, uh, agrees to monitor these conditions. About six months after the, the graduate would be fully operational. And counter cares and measure these impacts, uh, to verify, you know, whether our projections, uh, are correct or not. So that's basically my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or later. Thank you.
May I ask one question?
Yep.
Um, currently there's not a marked crosswalk at Chambers to cross Nassau. And just based on the numbers, um, pedestrians will, will be, um. Generated at this intersection and also to cross Nassau Street. Would the applicant consider providing a crossing at this location to cross Nassau Street? Since there is not one currently provided?
Well, uh, yeah, when we did the counts, um, a few months ago, you know, there were very few co- people crossing Nassau at that location. So definitely today there's not, and you know, and it's obviously affected by the pandemic, um, to, to a large degree. But, um, we don't believe that today there would be enough pedestrians to justify it. Maybe in the future there will be, you know, it's difficult to know, you know, how many of the people that will go in and out of the hotel. Will cross Nassau at this location. You know, then will not all go into this direction. Uh, so that's where the monitoring will be helpful. And I think we will obviously, uh, if, if we feel that there are enough people crossing there. We would, uh, be, you know, pleased to work with the town. I think we would have to work with the municipality to approach New York State, uh, New Jersey DOT to get the permission. This is a DOT issue. It's not up to us, unfortunately.
Right, yeah.
And as you know, that, that's not always very easy. You know, especially when we have crossings that are not too far. And I agree, ideally there should be a crossing there, but, um. We have to, you know, I think the monitoring study will determine the, will give us an answer.
And George, and, and you responded in my, my, um, traffic engineering review. But do you just want to touch on how, um, Bank Street is going to be improved to discourage the cut-through traffic?
Yeah, well, the first thing is that by taking out a very significant parking demand. We're talking about a hundred and ninety cars that by the old building, you know, parked somewhere. I suspect, uh, you know, not, not, not all of those or not many park on Bank. But some of them do, and you know, some of these people are just there, um, to visit the offices maybe for an hour or two. And they could easily park on Bank Street, you know, I, I, I can see that happening and I'm sure that it did happen. But this project, you know, I think will accommodate their parking demand, you know, but because they will have enough spaces. Especially during the day, there will be, you know, there will be plenty of parking available during the day for all their customers. Even if somebody comes in just for an hour or two. And then I think the, the applicant, um, I don't know if we have that in our presentation today. Agreed to, uh, I, I think participate in redesigning the access to Bank Street. So it looks less like a public street. It looks more like a private driveway in a way. Uh, where the, the pedestrian crossing of Bank Street will be raised and would remain, you know, the pedestrians will remain at the same level. So I think that is a very positive change in design, um, to discourage the overall use of Bank Street. Um, but we don't think that the hotel guests, the hotel traffic are likely to use hotel, the, uh, Bank Street to access the hotel. Uh, you know, that is one reason why we want to have a good functioning interior court. And it's also a reason we want to have, you know, good signage that directs the drivers to the entrance to the interior court.
Thank you, thank you, George. Um, I did notice that, um, John was able to get on, um, again. Can we pull him in from, um, the attendees into a panelist? It's John McDonough.
I'm right here, Chris. I'm, I'm right to, I'm right next to you in the, in the boxes.
Okay, sorry, John. Uh, thank you, uh, John. So we, uh, jumped ahead to, uh, traffic parking. Um, and I wanted to go back to your first slide.
Seventy-five, I think.
Yes, I believe it's seventy-six. Um, and we're talking, I guess you were going to talk a little bit here about landscaping and lighting.
Yes, again, uh, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity present, to present here. This part of the presentation is going to focus on the, the landscape and lighting aspect, more the design aspect of the plan. Will come back to me at the end with, uh, with, with the planning aspects. But we've been given an opportunity here as landscape architects to come up with, uh, really what is a, is a very, uh, I'll say beautiful landscape plan and lighting plan. To complement what is really going to be a very beautiful building here in your community. Certainly a significant betterment over that which presently exists right now. And the landscape program is going to create an, an effective blending of this very beautiful building with the surrounding landscape in, in your downtown here. Basic components of the landscape plan are, are pretty simple. First, at the ground level, uh, we're starting with streetscape improvements, both including pavement, landscaping and lighting. That will all complement, uh, your existing streetscape pattern. We've got the shade trees along the frontage. We're working our way, uh, with the scored paving pattern again, which is going to be consistent with the decorative pavement here in the community. On the top level, we've introduced those three gray areas, which you see as being a green roof. Which we know not only has, um, aesthetic benefit as well, but has numerous environmental benefits as well. In terms of a cooling aspect to it, in terms of water retention, water clarification and purification. Um, and again, creating more of a natural environment on the, on the rooftop as well. We're looking at introducing mosses and sedums, which are typical of a, of a green roof type system. And the benefits that go with it. In the back level, I don't have the opportunity to actually point at the screen here. But if you look to the right of this particular, yes, there is going to be, I call it the finger that extends out to Bank Street. Um, once again, I would like to thank the, uh, community over on the Bank Street side for actually meeting with us, letting me on their, on the decks and porches. To actually look at, uh, what the landscape and plant materials look like. I'll say on the, on the backside of the building presently. There are clinging vines there now and we're going to replicate that from a composition standpoint. The planting types that we're looking at there, we'll give a nice splash of color. We've got your traditional English, English ivy, Boston ivy. This is going to work some nice reds and greens. We're looking to transform what is now a hundred percent paved over, uh, condition with respect to that finger extending out to Bank Street. Which is going to become fully landscaped with a nice green element on the base level. We're looking at incorporating a shrub massing along the parking lot side. And then a shade tree or two, where we'll, we'll pull in some color. Again, let's say a, a honey locust or something like that. Which gives a nice combination of yellow in the fall color against the reds that we're going to play up against the, the building backdrop. Again, on the rooftop, we're looking to incorporate on that terrace level, some ornamental grasses, which will give the building a nice soft feel. The nice thing about those ornamental grasses is they do tend to have some movement and dance, uh, with the wind. And that creates some visual interest as well. So fountain grasses and boxwood-type plants are, are something that we're looking to incorporate. And then, of course, on the building side, the, where the clinging vines are, not only are we looking at ivy. But we're looking to incorporate flowering plantings as well. These will replicate what we saw on the neighboring property, uh, when we actually were, were given the opportunity to visit. Trumpet creeper, Dutchman's pipe vine, very beautiful plants. And this will affect, sure, I'll say, four seasons of seasonal interest on that back wall. We have a nice canvas, uh, uh, to paint with, I'll say, with, with this particular landscape. Flipping over to the next slide, please, Brooke. So this is frame number seventy-seven, just gives, but seventy-seven just gives a sense of what the green roof looks like. Again, we're working in a naturalistic landscape here. Ground covers, including sedums and mosses, uh, again, which are appropriate for a green roof type system. And have great applicability, uh, and utilization throughout New Jersey and, and the general area. Finally, the last slide here, Brooke, uh, slide number seventy-eight. Simply gives an indication of the lighting plan here. We've worked up a very simple, uh, yet tasteful sign package. You can see that there are four, four different sign types. You're all going to relate and integrate with the building itself. We've labeled sign type A, which runs along the streetscape side. These are going to be wall sconces, uh, that will complement the architectural aspect of the building. B are going to be under-story recessed lights that will not have the light source visible. But will be adequate to provide for lighting underneath in that service court area. Which again, we do have a, a wall barrier which will separate that land use from the adjacent property. And then finally, where there is that notch in the middle of the building. We've incorporated some, uh, wall lighting, school sconces as, as well, which would provide for illumination there as well. And then finally, running into the entrance court. As we come in and make our way down the, down the grade to the particular site. Uh, we're looking at ball sconces as well. That's what you see labeled as D. So again, four different types of light types, which will provide a nice soft light to strike an effective balance here of safe illumination. Without creating, uh, negative glare or spillage onto the adjacent properties. So as with the landscape plan, the lighting plan was given with care and sensitivity to the surrounding neighborhood. I think that's the end of my slides with respect to landscape and lighting.
Yep, I, I think at this point we jump ahead to ninety-nine, which is, um, talking about FAR and.
Chris, can I interrupt? It's Jim Purcell. I do have a question about the green roof.
Uh-huh, sure.
Um, and, and actually it's two questions. Uh, one is that, uh, John McDonough, you just, uh, talked about the green roof as having a, a visual effect, a nice visual effect. But what's the visual effect for? Who's going to be seeing this? Is this accessible to the guests?
No, this is going to be a passive, uh, green roof area. So.
Okay.
No, again, it does create, it does soften the hard lines of, of the rooftop, uh, from, from the top down. I, I agree.
Okay.
You're not go- you're not going to see what's happening on the roof from the ground level.
So the second, the second question I have is an architectural question because I couldn't tell from the roof plan. Um, I didn't see any way to access these green roofs for maintenance. Uh, and that's just a logistics thing. So if Steve Oakley could answer that question, it was one of my questions, I think, in, in my report.
Oh, so we have, uh, both stair bulkheads go up to the rooftop. And then there's a elevator overrun, but no, no elevator service. And then actually, we're going to be extending onto twenty Nassau as well, a.
Okay, um, the roof plan, the roof plan showed that those stairwells and bulkheads were surrounded by, um, a parapet wall. That was enclosing the mechanical equipment. So I didn't see an opening in the parapet wall.
Yeah, it'll be a screen wall with, you know, some concealed hardware that'll make a, a panel that can swing open.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we don't put in a green roof that nobody can get to to maintain. And, and then just have a green roof that dies. So, all right, thank you for that answer.
It, it's better than parachuting from the church.
Excuse me, Chris, I have one question of Mr. McDonough. Um, this is Steve Cohen. The question relates to your lighting slide.
Yes.
In the, on the northernmost wing, along the western property line, you've got. In the, on the northernmost wing, along the western property line, you've got B. Though the, the B indication now would be, does this reflect the cutback in that wing? So this, the B lighting is on the lower, on the lower part of that wall?
That is correct, yes.
So.
The, the uh, B is going to be associated with the understory of the, of, of the roof plan.
Oh, the understory, okay.
It's the building overhang.
Building overhang at that point. Okay, thank you.
You got it.
And then the D fixture is kind of a knee wall light that illuminates the roadway.
Correct, thank you.
Step light.
Okay, uh, I think we're up to slide ninety-nine. If we could fast forward to that.
Just one thing, um, Steve, do you want to, before we go on, do you want to talk about the impact of shifting the cores? Um, that Steve, that the chair had suggested on the other floors?
Yeah, Josh, we could either do that now, or we could do it when we get to the slides on setback and massing, uh, one oh four through one.
All right, we do later.
Excuse me, just one sec. It's uh, it's a little before ten. And I want to try to, at some point very soon, open it up to the public to ask questions about the presentation. To, uh, you know, that we've gone so far, but you can continue now and answer my question later. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Uh, and I, and I think um, Josh only has a few slides here, so maybe we can get through him at least.
Okay, uh, here we're looking at slide ninety-nine. Uh, this is an illustration of our central business district. You can note that it is bounded um, by residential zones um, on the north side. Um, of Nassau Street and the university on the south side. So there's an R one, an R four, RB and R four directly um, next to uh. These uh, the, the central business um, zone. Next slide. The buildings shown here in white are compliant with the FAR of one point five or below. All the others are non-conforming. So all the orange are non-conforming within our central business district. Sort of raises the question whether or not one point five is an appropriate FAR for the central business district. So um, to be clear, the majority of, of structures in the central business district are over the allowable one point five FAR. Next slide. The existing project site shown in blue here um, with an FAR of two point six five, that's the existing building shown in blue. Next slide. The hotel as proposed has an FAR of three point six two. Originally, um, it was three point eight two, but when we took out the rooms. Um, remove those rooms, it brings it down to three point six two. Um, the buildings in red um, have an FAR of three to four, which would be in line with the Palmer Square and buildings around Spring Street and Heinz Plaza. With the Henderson building shown in pink here um, on Witherspoon Street, having an FAR well over four. So although requiring a variance, it is not out of scale. Although it does require an FAR variance, it is not out of scale with the central business district in general. Uh, in addition, parking structures are allowed to have an FAR of three. On the new, and, and the new building will have eighty parking spots within, and there's no accommodation for this type of mixed use. When you incorporate a parking lot with uh, another structure. Um, so that would raise the, the allowable up to three. Next slide. Some items to consider when thinking about the FAR. Typically, we see FAR as interior space comparison to the rest of a project site. In this case, we have over six thousand five hundred square feet of outdoor space that is counting in the FAR. One thousand five hundred and twenty-five square feet that has a skylight structure above, which is being used to bring light to the entry, entry court, drive court here. And to um, for stormwater management, to prevent the vehicle assaults and things like that from mixing with the stormwater. Um, there's an additional five thousand square feet of outdoor covered parking and access drive ramp um, to the basement. Which are included in this FAR. When taken into account, these outdoor spaces would reduce the FAR even further down to three point three eight.
Any question, if I might?
Sure.
Um, the buildings that have an excess of what's permitted in FAR in the central business district, do they have variances for that?
Um, some of them might, some of them are um, predate the zoning. So I, I, we haven't done a study to see which are, which lane in which category.
Mr. Bridger?
Now I would offer basically the same comment. Some were pre-existing and some might, might have been granted FAR variances or before the. Most of them were before, I think they're pre-existing, so.
Thanks. And just uh, just so that um, there is a uh, recognition under your ordinance that if you have a building that was built in nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, yeah, sixty-eight, I'm sorry, nineteen sixty-eight. And um, that FAR is sort of vested in the property. So if you have an FAR at three point O. You could actually rebuild that building to the same extent that it was there, so long as you're not creating additional uh, non-conformities. So um, you know, like additional variances or so like this. So if it's limited to fifty feet and you, you build at a hundred feet, you, you're going to trigger variance. But if you keep within, you are essentially vested in that FAR. So the pre-existing nineteen uh, sixty-eight FAR. Is something that a, a lot of those old buildings could be using, whatever it was at that time. They have a right to actually adjust, change things, rebuild to that same FAR, and your ordinance also says, says without any additional parking. Uh, Josh, I'm sorry, you can continue.
That, that was it for the, the fair discussion.
Okay.
Can I, uh, can I just see if uh, if any of the board members um, have any questions so far of what we've heard this evening? Okay, um, yeah, let's go a few more minutes and then I'd like to have some public comment.
Okay, great. Um, I think, Steve, are we back to you on setbacks?
Yeah, correct. Uh, slide one oh five would be probably the best one. This just outlines the property. Again, one of the um, you know, the organization of the site actually puts the front yard on Chamber Street. Uh, we are looking to probably put an address of Chamber Street on to the hotel, uh, which would help out with wayfinding. Um, as it outlines here, you know, there's a setback. Uh, we're setback from the existing property line on Nassau Street. There's uh. Uh, some vaults that exist underneath the sidewalk there. And then on the other side, uh, with the existing loading dock, we're also uh, clear of that side yard setback. And uh, you know, the element that's shown is the small lot that runs over uh, adjacent to uh, the residential zone. Uh, and then mapping out the ten-foot setback at the uh, R four zone. Uh, we've taken a look at some options about how that's organized related to the existing construction. Uh, the existing building does encroach it. It has a height of about thirty-two feet at that area, uh, jumps up to about thirty-seven feet. Um, in the middle of the parking lot, as it uh, returns back to the uh, twenty Nassau Street uh, building area. So the main thing we've been looking at, you know, as suggested by Sprab, Sprab was alternatively looking at how we would handle the auto court from a standpoint of uh, sound control. Also um, uh, being a good neighbor to the existing Bank Street uh, residential residences. And looking at, you know, options related to uh, keeping an existing wall. Um, possibly only constructing an as-of-right scheme which exists over at twenty-two uh, chambers with a six-foot fence, so we'll quickly flip through some of those slides. Again, you know, existing massing puts the building right on the property line, as I mentioned, about thirty-two point five feet uh, from the property line. Um, setting back the hotel, or I mean, what we would do is preserve the existing wall, clean it up. As a kind of a grandfathered approach would be one, one option for us to examine uh, related to uh, compliance with uh, current codes. Of course, it's, you know, uh, doesn't do anything to adapt the experience there. Um, and it kind of came up with a lot of discussion with the Bank Street neighborhood of how to enhance this uh, exposure and making something a, a little more uh. Uh, addressing the neighborhood next door. Also looking to minimize the amount of window and uh, light glare onto the neighbors, uh, neighboring Bank Street area. I think, next slide, Brooke. So the next slide was, you know, looking at an as-of-right where, you know, if you look um, by the ten-foot setback provided is where a twenty-two chamber street exists. Um, that has a similar condition where parking is abutting or slightly setback from the, from the neighborhood. Uh, the building is pushed back a little bit. So what we'd actually physically do here is put a six-foot high fence around and have an open auto court and drop-off area. Um, kind of exposing the Bank Street neighborhood and the parking lot uh, to the activities of uh, hotel drop-off and arrival. So this would be compliant per zoning.
Steve, just, Steve, just to go back, I just want to reference the slide number that.
Oh, sure, one, one thirteen.
One thirteen, and, and just Stephen, uh, Chair, just to be uh, clear, clear, because you were having some of these questions. We have shifted most part the building back. Um, removed all the rooms, all of the hotel function essentially, interior habitable rooms are all within the setback. As shown in uh, George's testimony, we do need that circulation below. That circulation is not prohibited in the setback. So you could have parking, you could have the, like, the drive aisle there. Um, so what we did was look at what would be a plan look like, where you have a fully conforming site without a setback to the R four being requested, without a variance being requested. And the two cases we just looked at was preserving or bring, leaving the wall as it exists today. Or, oh, you know, putting it, that wall as it exists today is a pre-existing non-conform, where it doesn't get any additional variances because it's there. And then you essentially built behind it, but it's disgusting and ugly looking, so we would have to fix it up in some way. But that would be an area where we wouldn't have to require any new additional variances related to setback. Um, it was a pre-existing condition. And then the second one, fully conforms to the ordinance. Because like we said, the building is set back, you're allowed to have a fence on the property line, you're allowed to have that, those other elements. We don't like this plan. Um, because we want to uh, protect that side, our plan is to actually enclose that area. Unfortunately, when you enclose that area, or maybe even just build a higher fence, which requires a variance. Um, you could get to something that's better from a planning perspective, more protective, but it does trigger those variances. Sorry, Steve. I just wanted to explain a little bit. Please continue.
So Brooke, if you want to just advance the slide, so this was the submitted submission that, you know, had some guest rooms that we've now taken out. We've lowered that height from about thirty-eight feet at that point down to uh, twenty foot tall. Um, some of the elements that John uh, didn't have a chance to explain was, you know, some landscaping that we would put at that edge. Uh, continue some landscaping that uh, exists between, behind eleven and thirteen uh, Bank Street. That, that's growing right now on the existing wall, replicate that, and then bring it across the uh, lot that we have. Uh, other articulation suggested by uh, HPC was adding some uh, additional brickwork along this, some header courses, making some relief. But our, our main organizational strategy was making sure that, you know, windows and illumination of the residential district was out of, of the disturbance. I think uh, one of the slides coming up, Brooke, is. You know, starts to just look at what that uh, improved condition is related to the heights. Um, so we would be reducing those elements and again, maintaining full enclosure of the auto court. Again, out of the three options, of course, the preferred option and one we've uh, you know, investigated a little further with uh, all sound control and shadow studies. Is the preferred option below with the twenty-foot high wall, enclosing the auto court. So again, you know, just incorporating and then, you know, I think we have a slide next that just notes the different meetings and the activity that we had. Between Sprab, HPC and the Bank Street neighborhood uh, over the course of a, several months and meetings. Uh, collectively, you know, having uh, more or less onsite walks with some of the neighbors. Um, and, and going through some of the opportunities and kind of building consensus on the architectural organization of the uh. Mansard element uh, coming across the top in order to rescale it on the street.
Steve, uh, two things. One, um, yeah, just you can wait on here for a second. Can you talk about um? Respond to the chair's question regarding the um, core and why um, there's not a lot of flexibility to do stuff with the elevator, you know, the core and, and why?
Yeah, so I mean, the planned location of the elevator and the stair at, at that point is really assisting in the uh, parking level down below. So it's uh, influenced by maximizing the eighty cars uh, circulating within the basement. On the first floor, it uh, created an element where we could get refuse out as well as making connection there. And the hotel rooms, it's positioned, you know, at a ma- maximum location related to uh, egress, dead-end corridor distances. As well as the depths of the hotel rooms uh, facing uh, Chamber Street. Uh, it, it ended up at a placement that, that worked functionally to provide for housekeeping and other program elements that occur at the mezzanine level. Uh, not to disrupt the first floor operations.
And, and a lot of uh, you know, given the size of the building, a lot of the retail space on um. Nassau Street essentially could have been shifted to hotel use if that wasn't needed or wanted to be preserved. But there's a, there's a minimum amount of space you need in, in order to activate Chamber Street as well, correct?
Correct, to, to build a proper-sized lobby and uh, restaurant element.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I know you were going to go through some of the points, but I, I wanted to at least have, you know, respond to the chair's question. Um, were you going to list through some of the changes, or were you just gonna?
Well, again, the main change was uh, you know, setting back um, at a lower elevation for the first, for the second floor. So we took away those elements. Uh, fully enclosed the um, auto court area in order not to have any uh, sound um, or uh, transmission into the parking air, parking lot that exists currently. Um, other elements were, you know, um, as far as providing fenestration into any of this. Uh, these are on the lot line and it's a building code restriction that doesn't really let us permit uh, windows to go in. Um, you know, so we made some changes there uh, behind eleven and thirteen Bank Street. We've also uh, worked with them to study the um, appropriate height for uh, headlights approaching. So we're probably looking at a taller uh, wall over there that would include uh, some sound control elements as well as um, some visual screening. Above it that we were uh, in discussion with uh, one of the homeowners. And, you know, some of the other articulation that we added was, you know, a stone base at the bottom of the, the building. And as I mentioned, some of the detailing that was added in the final design uh, related to header and soldier courses.
And, and Steve, the wall itself is going to be shifted about six inches in this onsite, is that correct?
Yeah, the construction will require us to kind of auger through the existing foundations and then uh, install wood lagging as we excavate for the basement along the property line.
And the final structure is going to be six inches in to allow for plantings on the outside, is that correct, or?
Yeah, that's one of the accommodations we're looking to make um, related to discussions with the parking lot owner.
And, and the part on the very end, it's hard because we don't have a pointer, we're actually bumping it in uh, three feet, I believe. So there's a tapered area that will go back and.
Far corner.
Yeah, so where we were able to make adjustments and pull it in, we were, we did so. Correct?
Correct, yes. And then we've also removed, you know, there was a utility pole in that corner that's been uh, removed at this point. To kind of clean up that back triangle area.
Now, just, just a question, if you don't mind. Um, the, there's a portion of the existing buildings adjacent on Nassau Street that abut. Um, both the existing twenty Nassau and is going to abut the new addition and the parking below grade. So you're going to probably have to do some underpinning of those foundations, or have you looked at that?
Correct, there, you know, we've had a geotechnical engineer who's done site borings and uh, you know, developed some documentation related to our supportive excavation. So there are elements of adjacent buildings where we uh, will have to put some underpinning.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, I'm sorry. Please continue.
So this.
I know I was trying to speed through this. Uh, so next up is kind of the sound control measures and some of the analysis of Ryan.
I think, uh, do we show, so this is. I think, do we show, so this is, what is this, 121? Why don't we go to 122 so that they can see what their current plan is? So the, the last one was the original. These are all of the changes that we've incorporated, you know, like the green elements, the articulation based on our responses and feedback from the community and in a way that's most protective of the community. The area, Steve, can you just describe the area in the, I guess it's the courtyard? That's where we have the, the stormwater management. So that's at a height of 20 feet about? Down there?
Oh, correct. The outer court. Yeah. So that outer court, you know, recesses about 35 feet back from the property actually adds to some, you know, through the shadow study investigation, some, some enhancement to the amount of light hitting, hitting the Bank Street area during mornings. So it, you know, it's a very nice relief against the existing building at its three-story on the property line.
And that goes back in about 50 feet?
Goes in about 36 feet.
Oh, 36. Okay. I thought it was 36 wide and 50 feet back, but maybe I'm wrong.
And then those are guest rooms at this location that you're looking at. You know, other area, it's a, a bridge connection further up between the Nassau Street and Chamber Street building.
Okay. So next up would be?
Okay. One second. If we could, I'd like to ask again, any of the board members, do any of the board members have any questions? At this point?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. In terms of the underground garage, is there any concern about water seepage? And what sort of mitigation have you proposed for that, if any?
I was just having trouble hearing the questions, are.
Question, water seepage.
Garage.
Yeah, in the garage.
I'm sorry?
Well, again, we're, you know, we've maximized the covered area by building overhang and introducing the stormwater management as well as enclosing this triangular, irregular-shaped portion against the property line. So most of that was in order to separate the oil. It's a similar arrangement to what currently exists where the loading dock is on the side of the property. So no real change. The grading would pitch a certain way to capture any sort of water outflow, which we've been working with Van Note Harvey and Tom O'Shea's office.
Okay.
Eve? Yeah, I, I had a thought earlier regarding traffic flow. And I, if, what I recall was that the gentleman who was speaking about that there would not, there shouldn't be a concern about people parking on Bank Street and that people, you know, that even people who were just coming in and out for like an hour could access the parking. What, so what triggered, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I thought was, I, I, it seems to me all the parking in the garage is valet. And I would wonder how often somebody would want to turn their car over to a valet and think about the delay and if they were only going to be there for a short time. So I, I just wondered about that. That point of short-term parking being something that people would feel. I mean, does, if, can, if you can speak to that, if you, I, I, it just seems like it, it's a point that might be a concern, but that might just not really be, you know, realistic.
Yeah. It's a good point. You know, some people may decide to use a valet and others, you know, because of the convenience, and others may look, you know, for a space on the street. You know, we do have on-street parking in the area. In regards to Bank Street, you know, the other point that we should mention is that it is my understanding that the, that there will be only permit parking allowed on Bank Street. So in, in any case, that kind of parking opportunity would not exist in the future. So if we have, and there wouldn't be many of these short-term visitors, but if we have these short-term visitors, you know, if they find a convenient on-street space, they would probably use that rather than using the valet. But, you know, each person is different in that sense. I think you, you, you make a point that some people may not want to use it, but I think, you know, we're not talking of a very large number of people anyway. You know, most people will be there for, you know, to spend the night.
Okay.
Excuse me. Eva, are you, are you done? Or you have another question?
No, that's, that, that's it.
I just have a question. Derek, Derek, is the, is the, the Bank Street parking going to be permit-only? I know there's been a lot of discussion on parking on Bank Street, but has the council decided if that's going to be the case?
I'm, I'm going to have to defer to either Jim Purcell. I know that was discussion, but I don't know if there's been an official decision yet.
I'm, hey, Derek. Yeah, Mike. I'm, I'm on the task force. So nothing, nothing, nothing has gone to council, but the task force has met with Bank Street residents and discussed it a bit. And it looks like it will be all permit on Bank Street.
Thank you, Michael.
Good. You're welcome. And I have, I have a few, two or three parking-related questions, if I could ask them now. And I'll, I'll just list all three of them. One is the, the employees just have to fend for themselves on parking, is my understanding. Two, I was wondering, and it relates to parking a little bit, what do you project as the vacancy rate on your hotel? Or occupancy rate, however you want to phrase it. And three, your consultant said you're going to monitor traffic. And what if you underestimated? Then what? Those are my questions.
Thank you. I can address the first and last question. Employee, you know, when we develop a parking ratio for a hotel, now these ratios tend to be based on counts that are done at similar hotels. And those counts include all the cars that parked. And so that would include the employees. So the ratio that we're talking about does include employee parking. It's very few at night, you know, not many working during the night. But during the day, there would be employees there and they would park in the basement. And I estimate that there will be enough room to also park the employees of the retail and commercial establishments that are part of this project in the basement as well. Because during the day, there will be excess capacity. And the question that you're raising, you know, the, the last point, you know, if, if there are shortages, could there be shortages during the night? I don't believe so. Based on the statistics that we have from the Gragit Hotels at other locations that are in a similar situation, that the, the parking that is supplied, the 80 spaces will be sufficient. That's my opinion based on those data that I have seen during the night. I think the monitoring, it's not going to be an ongoing monitoring, although the hotel itself will be able to monitor the parking demand. The monitoring that we mentioned is primarily to, you know, to do one monitoring study, possibly more or less six months after opening, to figure out, you know, the, the traffic impact at the intersection of Nassau and Chambers and the pedestrians that may want to cross Nassau Street and so on. And so at that stage, you know, the, we would work with the municipality to try to, you know, see if, if there were any problems. And there are other, you know, as you may know, there are other elements happening right now that affect this condition as well. And that's the one-way operation of Witherspoon between Nassau and-
Yes.
So that's something else that will affect this intersection independently of the hotel and will have a much more significant impact at this intersection than the hotel will have. So we, we have to take that into consideration as well. But, you know, the hotel agreed, the applicant agreed to do that study, you know, about six months after opening.
George, I want to defer to Pablo. David, I think you had some comments or related to parking. I know you took a look at it. Did you have anything to add to this discussion?
Um, just mostly that we had submitted a letter of support on behalf of the Bank Street neighbors to be part of the permit parking task force, the pilot program, since they hadn't been included at the beginning. And we've been in full support of that because we know that it's an existing concern of theirs due to the retail and office space. And we tried everything we can. And I know Mr. Floyd was, was on that Zoom call as well. And it does seem to be as if it's moving forward, but whether or not council approves it, it's, it's up to them.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, well, excuse me, Chris. You, you were gonna, I'd like to, at this point, if there are no other board questions, I'd like to-
I have one question.
Please.
Quickly. I, I'm just curious. In the parking ratios that were displayed in one of the slides, I noticed that all of the cities were, they're, they're much larger than, than the size of Princeton. It, does, does that tend to impact the ratios? I, I saw things like Berkeley, Chapel Hill, Dallas? Or is, is a ratio typically relevant, no matter what the size of the city?
It's not so much the size of the city. It's more what I would call the density and the, the, the mix of uses. So I would say a city like Berkeley is an example, is probably less auto-dependent than Princeton, you know, or if you want to put another way, is probably more walkable and, and transit-friendly than Princeton. And you can see that it has a very low ratio. It's one of, it's the lowest here. But then you have other places, you know, and I, I don't know them all, but other places that may be bigger, Dallas as an example, may be bigger, but it's not necessarily, it's a very auto-oriented place. So I would say it's more the kind of auto orientation. And I think in that sense, you know, Princeton is very positive in the sense that you have, you know, if you look at the census statistics, you have a very high percentage of people walking to work or bicycling to work or using public transportation. So you may not be at the level of Berkeley. I, I know Berkeley because I lived there for a number of years, but it is still, you know, a condition that you have in Princeton that is very favorable in that sense.
Thank you. And I, I think we were also looking at that list for the number of keys, which had, you know, we're at 178 keys or rooms, and these were closest that we can find in terms of, you know, good numbers, a little bit above, some a little lower, but, you know, somewhere in that same size.
Okay. Okay. What I'd like to try to do now is allow the public to ask questions of, ask questions relating to the presentations to date. And we'll take a limited number of questions because we only have so much time this evening. And then Chris, we'll go back to you at, you know, you know, 10:50. And so you can, you know, close and then we'll continue on at the next, at the next hearing. Claudia, do we have, or Eve, do we have people who have raised their hands that want to speak? Now, keep in mind that what we're looking for are just comments relate, questions related to the presentation so far. We'll have plenty of time later in the next hearing for other questions, but I just want to get some public comment. Anyone?
Mr. Gray is online. Bill Gray?
Okay. I think he'll have to be sworn in. Karen?
Um, yeah. Can we, okay. Can you all see, will you be able to see Mr. Gray? Because right now the screen is filled. There we go. Um, Mr. Gray, where are you? Has he been moved over? Can we see him or?
I think he needs to be moved over.
Yeah. Let's move him over so he can, he can testify.
My actual question is-
There you are.
There you go.
Mr. Gray, could you give us your address first?
My address is 14 Bank Street.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I really, I, I wanted to know how we raise our hand. I don't see a button for it.
I don't either.
So that's, that was my question. I think that, that's why there, there was that long pause.
Right, right.
Because nobody really had a way to raise their hand.
All right.
Actually, I think if you go into participants, at the bottom, if you open into participants, you'll see at the bottom, the tab that says invite or mute me. And then the other tab says raise hand.
I don't see it.
You don't see it?
I don't either.
Uh, let's see. Um, you know why? Because you need to be a panelist. If you were to click into the panelists, it gives the panelists the option to raise hand. Okay.
Yeah. Nobody can find it. I-
Yeah.
So I, I don't want to ask any questions because I know my neighbors have questions too. So can we resolve the issue of the button?
So may I recommend that people raise their hands by providing a comment in the question and answer that they want to, they want to ask a question and then we can do it that way?
Okay. Yeah, I guess. Unless, yeah.
There's a bunch of-
I, I do have, well, I do have a comment. We, the FAR and the setback stuff that we talked about near the end of the presentation tonight. Those are two really big subjects and we kind of went through them quickly. And, and now we're going to take a four-week break. And I'm just wondering if there, there is a lot of concern with those two items from, from the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering if we can just shift that all to January and, and sort of begin again to tackle those two items, because I think a lot of the other questions that we might have along the way might be answered or resolved to our satisfaction. Just a comment.
I actually think, Mr. Gray, I actually think that's a good idea. Those are two very important issues. And I think we can continue that portion of the conversation into January. I agree.
Great. Thank you very much. Is anybody else raising their hand?
I, I see some people saying that the raise hand button is there, some people saying it's not. So if you don't see it, maybe comment on the question and answer and for that seed, if you pop it, that'd be great.
All right. I, I don't want to dominate this comment period. So I'm, I'm going to go all the way back to the beginning, back around 8:30 PM when this all began. I'm curious about slide number 38. Can we see slide 38?
That's the historic-
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, so when I look at that and I think, I think Meredith or someone brought it up, there's two entrances, two ramps on that diagram from Chamber Street into the garage and slash warehouse. And I'm, I'm curious. It's a really big question. I'm curious why the entire project of the north end of the building is based on essentially preserving the driveway that exists there now, the loading area, the loading dock. And, and I'm just curious why the plan is based, why the driveway is being kept in that position? Because it most impacts Bank Street neighbors directly with cars coming up the ramp, light noise, squealing of the tires. When George presented all the options for parking, I look at all those black arrows and I hear a squeal every time I see one of the black arrows. So we've all been into the Spring Street garage. But I'm curious if, if in the past- But I'm curious if if in the past there were ramps to a garage in a different location and actually before the driveway existed, before the loading ramp existed. No one's ever addressed or or asked the question before, but why do we have to have the cars entering in that specific spot? Why couldn't they be entering somewhere else in the whole new plan from the ground up? That really has no impact on Bank Street. And and there's no reason to have to worry about impact on Chamber Street because there's a church there and a dentist's office and a, and a Japanese restaurant across the street. Just curious.
I I can address some of that question. I think I see two reasons to have the driveway where it is proposed. One is that, that is, as you can see from this figure, that is the location where the building is the widest and where it is easiest for a vehicle to make a U-turn. The other reason is that because of the queuing along Chamber Street, cars that approach the intersection of Nassau, we want to be as far away from that queue as possible to minimize, you know, the impact of that queue. So those are two reasons that I see why, you know, it is preferable to have the driveway at that location. Regarding the impacts that you mentioned to the neighbors, I think there are other ways to mitigate those, and I'm sure we're going to talk more about them.
Well, we we started to talk about them tonight. I think I need to hear from Steve Oakley on that question about why driveway where it is, and why can't we rearrange, why can't we? What what you came up with essentially are lines on paper at this point. You haven't broken ground. And and you have helped us quite a bit with some of the changes near the northwest corner behind 11 and 13. But I'm just give me a good reason why we have to have the driveway right there.
Yeah, one of the issues is, you know, maintaining the physical connection to 20 Nassau Street from a standpoint of our back of house operations, also providing an entranceway, a kind of a secondary entrance and exit onto Nassau Street for the hotel guests at the, at the second floor. So you have kind of a side doorway to get out. So the main thing was just creating that, you know, the synergy between the lobby and the Nassau Street retail. If we did, I think some of our earlier schemes was pushing a ramp very close to that transition between Nassau Street and the proposed chambers. That that was problematic related to dimension off of Chamber Nassau Street intersection. But it's really just solely to to make a good connection between the existing building and the proposed.
Okay. So George was mentioning that it's convenient, he used the word convenient and for the hotel guests arriving and I think you're going to be up against some inconvenience that is being presented to the Bank Street neighbors, so sometimes when I hear that this is good for the guests because it's easy for them to drive in and make their turnaround and taxes can do it. I I want, I want all of the board members to understand that people live on Bank Street and that the convenience for the hotel which turns into an inconvenience for the neighbors, where's the balance? They get something they need in a, in a whole new project and we lose. We lose light, we lose quiet. We lose sunlight, we gain noise. So I I just want to sort of leave you with that and and maybe somebody else can start asking other questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, Claudia, can you bring in the next person?
Am I next, Claudia?
I see Jean.
I think I'm the only one that's managed, the other one that's managed to get in.
Good, yeah, we can hear you, so, oh.
Next to Chris.
This is, Mrs. Crowder, could you give us your address, please?
I'm at 22 Bank Street.
All right, and we'll swear you in, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to swear Chip into and right next?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, Mr. Crowder, same question, you swear from your testimony will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since we're not going to be talking about massing tonight, I'll I'll just move on to some of the smaller pieces. As far as the the part, the hotel, restaurant and bar, we kind of skirted around that in our neighborhood meeting and Pablo, where's Pablo, I can't find him. We didn't really discuss that in any detail as far as the impact that that would have, and with the pub coming at the post office and the evening hours and your prime time being in the evening, that's a bit concerning for short term parking. I I I guess that would be more of a question directed to George again, George's.
Well, I think again, in terms of you know, the parking activity on Bank Street that can be controlled, you know, if if the municipality adopts the permit parking and it would be permit parking only is a significant protection. And in addition to design, the access to Bank Street, you know, the design of that driveway connection to Nassau is going to be, it's going to make a big difference to, you know, people driving along there and trying to figure out where they can make a turn.
I'm not only speaking of Bank Street, I mean, in the downtown, not in the evening, at six to eight o'clock, prime time, restaurant time. I think it's going to be a challenge.
Well, the two, two answers, one is, there is, you know, and we have statistics, we did submit the statistics to the municipality that show that, you know, there is a peak around eight o'clock on Saturdays, but it's not at full capacity, you know, the parking capacity in in downtown Princeton peaks during the day, you know, the afternoon hours and lunch hours. The the second point is the significant improvement that's realized in terms of parking by taking out all the existing uses in that existing building, we're talking about 190 spaces. That makes a big difference in terms of the overall parking availability on streets, you know, the and and wherever people are parking in downtown, so that's, that's a very significant improvement for downtown in terms of parking.
I'm not disagreeing with the 10 to five o'clock time slot, I think that that's going to be advantageous to us, I think, I don't think the evening is going just walking around town in the evening and seeing what's parking, what parking is available. When we weren't COVID, I think that's going to be a problem.
See, you've gave, given a great convincing argument about how much better the parking will be based upon what it was in the existing use. But I don't think you really know what the usage was for the existing use, you're just pulling it off the zoning requirements. The existing use, many of those offices were only open one or two days a week or an afternoon or an evening. They were people who selected that place because they didn't need the full parking for the whole week. And the rents were reasonable and that's what, that's space they picked. It's, it's not really related to what the ordinance says, it's what what was there, and you, I don't think you have numbers on it, I don't think anybody does. So the, yes, there probably will be a benefit for the hotel with regards to parking, but I don't think it's nearly as great as you claim, and when you throw in a restaurant which has sort of hit a lot of us by surprise, that parking demand at dinnertime and maybe a little at lunchtime, that's going to eat up things and it's not going to be as great as you claim. That's my.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying, and you're right about, you know, that we don't know exactly what happened in that building before, I I heard there were a lot of therapist offices that probably also open on Saturdays and probably open in evenings as well. So that, you know, part of the benefit may also happen in the evening, we we don't know, you know, we don't have the exact answer. But I, you know, I I do think conditions will get better, there's no doubt about that. And, oh, the other point I want to make, the restaurant is not a full dinner restaurant. The restaurant that's there is called more a cafe or a breakfast bar. Now, as you can see in many of these kind of what we call business hotels, it's not a a regular restaurant, you know, with full dinner with menu and so on. So the, this hotel in the evening will not attract restaurant, you know, restaurant clients to any significant degree. The bar may be, you know, in later hours, attract people, but the, the bar will largely attract people that are in the area that may go walk over, you know, not everyone is going to drive there. So I don't think that you're going to see a significant change in evening parking pattern in that area.
So I I just wanted to chime in a bit on the, on the the building itself, I've been in the building for 14 years. As an architect, I I tend to be a workaholic, so I tend to be in this building probably, you know, on average 14 to 20 hours a day, which doesn't speak so well for me personally, but but having that type of experience in the building, I can tell you that you know, there was a very high demand for parking during the day. The people who would be coming to the therapists would often be parking, they'd often park on Bank Street. Some of my employees who are in the building would often park on Bank Street. You know, no matter how I discourage them. But there would also be, you know, yoga classes that were upstairs, you know, and you'd have 15 to 20 people coming in at night taking up every parking space in the area, there was a very high, this building has a huge parking demand. Maybe not so now that some of the tenants have left, but before graduate bought this building, there was a, I mean, you you saw, I would try to park here at night on the weekends and and it would, it would be difficult. Okay, unless you knew where you were, unless you had a spot in the lot or you were going someplace else. Okay, there's a very high demand for for parking for this building as it has been for a number of years.
And the new project adds another 80 spaces into the mix.
Which don't exist now.
And and in additional, the queuing spaces are not counted either, so those are some extra areas to help with flexibility, but they're not even counted towards the 80.
So that goes to one other parking question, I promised I wasn't going to talk about parking, I was only going to talk about massing, but since we're not doing that. The employees and shop owners and their employees can park in the 80 spaces, that's not what we heard before.
Yeah, that's new.
That's absolutely new.
I I mentioned that based on the fact that during the day, you know, when those employees are there, there will be excess room in the basement, there will not be 80 cars parking there during the day. The hotel peaks, hotel parking peaks at night. And that it is very, it will be very easy for the graduate to allow those, all the employees, the hotel employees and the employees of the retail commercial businesses that will be there to park in the basement. And I think the applicant can confirm that, whether they want to do that or not, but there will be room and, you know, I I see that as a very easy solution.
I I also think there's a strong expectation that there will be people walking and biking, I mean, employees are not going to fly in from out of state that you know, people working in the facility, whether you're, you know, working with one of the restaurants or, you know, working to help run the hotel, you know, it's going to be a big draw from the community as well, so you're not going to see you know, a a whole shift of employees coming from out of town. And I think that's pretty, at least in my discussions, pretty normal for these type of hotels in the, in the places that they've constructed them before.
And and also, we hire a lot of students generally across all our hotels, and they obviously tend to not have vehicles of their own, so that's a further incentivization to continue to walk and use public transfer, transit when when appropriate.
So you're saying you're, you're, you have all these empty spaces for employees and and retail people. So you fill up those spots with them, how does that mix with the people that actually need to use the spots that are hotel guests, how, where, how does that all add up? There's, there's like a an equation that I don't understand. You park all the employees in the basement, they take up spots, how many spots? How many, how many people are going to drive in? My daughter worked at a restaurant at the other end of Nassau Street every summer. And she would get out at 1:00 AM, 12:00, 1:00 AM, and it's about three quarters of a mile to the restaurant, but she would drive and she'd have to park a car down there. So you have employees leaving the restaurant, the bar at the end of the shift that's late at night, and I I I can see some people driving in and needing that space, which might be a space for a guest.
Well, if we look at the, if we look at what's currently there from a retail standpoint, none of those places are going to be open past what's considered normal business hours. From Sacred, the coffee shop, to Jam and Crepes and Nassau Street Barber's, just to name a few, those are, those are retail locations that are operating under normal business hours. As far as the restaurant and and bar, just to reiterate George's point, I mean, we're talking about a, an outlet that is serving primarily guests, we are not envisioning just to use an, an example, a Mediterranean where people are coming from all over Princeton to to eat and they're driving in. These outlets are not, that's not what we're envisioning for these outlets, and just to reiterate once more, these retail outlets that are there, they're, they're, they're gone after, after a pretty reasonable hour.
Again, you know, the, it's important to realize the parking ratios, whether it's the zoning ratio that Princeton has or the ratio that we have from other graduate hotels like in Berkeley and other places, they do include the employee parking, it's not just guest parking, so the numbers that we're talking about include the hotel employees. And again, the hotel employees, the the number is very small during the night, it's relatively, you know, it's, I don't know exactly what they are, but they they tend to be more present during the day. And what I mentioned is the other people that could be parking in the garage easily are the other employees related to retail and commercial businesses, you know, the barber shop and so on. And they would park there like any valet parking, you know, the the car is taken by a valet, it's like any parking garage in Manhattan, you know, you drop off the car, whether you're a resident or you're an employee or whatever commuter, doesn't make a difference. The valets will take the car down in the basement and they bring them back when they are asked to retrieve the car.
The other, the other comment about it, you said that, oh, well, a lot of the employees are going to walk. Well, a lot of the employees aren't going to be paid all that much and they aren't going to be able to afford to live in Princeton, so it's going to be a long walk from Hamilton. So, you know, it's definitely the details here.
There is a large student population that gets employed and we expect them to walk or bike, and there are other people in the area, there's mass transportation, there's Uber, there's a whole host of things, I I don't think you can make, and besides, the, the, the numbers that George are talking about, whether you look at existing hotels or demand based on I T E are all well below what we're providing, so we think there's going to be ample parking spaces, particularly when you have a property right now that has a higher demand today and no parking at all. It's a huge win.
Could you, could you, this is Eve Colson, could you clarify what you mean by restaurant? Is it, it sounds like, I I wouldn't call like a breakfast buffet a restaurant. So I'm just trying to understand, and I, I went over for a minute to see if I could look at the plans and see what if there's a kitchen, what kind of space there is for that, but restaurant, what, what do you mean by that exactly?
So David, is this you or Steve to describe the locations for the food? I mean, Pablo. Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a, an outlet in many of our hotels that is called Point Dexter, and that's going to be, again, what George had said earlier, more of a And that's going to be, again, what George had said earlier, more of a grab and go. You can grab your coffee there. You can grab pastry of some sort. And then we are also going to have a, and Steve can get into this a little more in terms of the location of, of all the mechanicals and all the equipment and all that. We do have the option to have a bar restaurant in the basement level. We haven't designed that fully, fully yet, but that is not something that we would never design anything that would not work operationally for us. Meaning that would require people to drive, again, just to use the example, you know, we don't envision it to be this sort of location, a, a destination place, so to speak. That is not what, what we normally do and that's not what we need. Quite frankly, we want our hotel guests to activate that space. Think of it more of a, of a hotel bar as opposed to, you know, a standalone restaurant.
So, so Pablo, you know, comparing other things in Princeton, you're really talking about like a cafe with light fare that's really servicing the people in the hotel as opposed to a full-scale restaurant like say, Mediterra or one of the other restaurants we're familiar with.
Yes.
Hey, hey, Josh, since you're, you live in town, does it compare to the grab and go in the library? Is it that size or is it? I don't know, like F's down the street. It's a very small restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Is it, is it like a Starbucks setup where there's a glass counter and you, you point to what you want and, and do they make, is there going to be a kitchen like that?
So there is going to be a kitchen. Steve probably talked to this a little bit better than I could, but my take it's, it's imagine something like, I don't know, like a Che Alist, but something that's open a little bit later so that you could still have some of those kinds of sandwiches, some of that kind of light fare that you could sit down in lobby and have or take to your room. I mean, it's that type of thing. It's not like, it's not like a Mediterra or a, you know, or a full, full restaurant. Pablo, please correct me if I'm, if I'm.
Excuse me one second, Josh, Pablo, Mr. Gray. We're getting, we're getting really close to 11 o'clock. I, one of the board members, Michael, you have a question?
I just want to correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like the grab and go is different from the yet to be designed restaurant bar, which is mentioned in your documents of having a max capacity of 116 people, I believe. Isn't that what I read?
The basement is, it's a bar, not a restaurant. It's supposed to be like a speakeasy, like that kind of, kind of experience. It's, it's a bar, not a, not a restaurant.
But they wouldn't have to drive or something somehow.
Believe you did have a, a max capacity in your documents estimate of 116 people.
Yeah, a lot of that's derived on the, just the capacity of the exits.
Okay. Yeah. I just wanted to put that number out there to the, the neighbors and to you for this.
Thank you.
One second.
That checks it up a level. I, I, I'm finished. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I don't really think we can go beyond 11. Chris, do you want to, do you want to say anything else here?
No, no, I, I, I think it was very nice to hear the comments and questions from everyone. Hopefully we've, we've provided enough information in response and to the extent we haven't, we can certainly pick off, pick up where we left off at our next meeting. We'll have our professionals here. We'll be able to go through and answer questions. And we'll also have the rest of our presentation. I think we've, we've gotten. Oh, about halfway through. So a lot of this is going to move a lot quicker as we go on, but there are some elements that I think are going to be very interesting and pertain to some of the questions that were asked tonight as well. So I think the more information that we have and able to provide more testimony, I think the, the clearer it's going to be. And, and I, and I, I guess I, the only other thing is to talk about where, when the next meeting is, what time, you know, that type of thing.
As I understand it, and Claudia, maybe you can speak to that, but it's January 6th. Again, it's 7:30?
Yes, it is the sixth, at 7:30.
January.
Steve, I just had two points I wanted to bring up. One, Christopher, we need an extension of time from your client.
Yep.
Board members know we have statutory periods of time to hear applications. So this application's been reviewed for some months. So we do need an extension of time and I'm wondering if you can give that to us now. And then I'm sure Claudia will ask you for a letter confirming.
We'll, we'll extend it to, to next month. Sure. No problem.
And, and I believe our next meeting will just be the hotel on the 6th.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
And, and there will not be further noticing since that new date is being announced. So for all the neighbors who are listening, you will not get a new notice. You know, essentially this is your notice tonight that it's being continued to January 6th.
Okay, I, I can handle that. And is it the same link then?
That's what I was going to ask.
It's a standing link.
I'm not sure about that. Claudia, is it the same link?
I'm, I'm going to try to make it say the same link, but if not, I will email everybody.
Okay.
So, so what Karen, what I typically do in this situation is say that for purposes of getting into the meeting, you should go to the municipal website and go to the agenda because the agenda will have the link. And so, you know, it won't be in a new notice or anything like that, but the agenda will always have a link. So if we carry it to January 6th at 7:30, the link to the meeting will be provided at the municipal website under the zoning board agenda, and you can go there and click on that and that would bring you right in.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so what'll happen then at the next meeting, we'll hear the balance of the testimony from the applicant. Then the board will ask questions and then we'll open it up to the public. And like I said, anybody, everybody who wants to question will be, will be able to question. So.
And Steve, that would include any presentations then, that anybody wants to make, any objectors want to make.
Yes, exactly. So anybody who wants to speak will be able to speak. Okay. Well, look, I think we're pretty close here. So thank you all very much. And I think it was a good meeting. We got some good comments and, and we'll move forward. And I hope everybody has a healthy and a safe holiday season.
Thank you.
Too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Chris, what slide did we make it to?
I think we only got to seven.
One, 124.
Oh, we got up to, yeah, yeah, 120. We got 120 to 180 next time.
But let's make sure that the hand raising option is very clear next time. I don't know what happened to it. I don't, I don't know what you did, but then it worked. Whatever you did, it fixed it. Or whoever did it.
It may be enough.
Depends when you, you zoom last. If you haven't updated your Zoom, the older version will eliminate your hand raising ability.
I'm up to date. I've been zooming for weeks and updating. Different computer. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Night.
Night.
I, I can just see.
I can't leave meetings. I'm so bad at leaving meetings. Wait. That's funny.